Buenas, dan mananas edus para hamzas torus. Donkulu nas edus mahasi. You have to smile when you hear that. Donkulu nas edus mahasi para finaten midu pago na taluani. Man ilu dan manai maang todi manggagi gwinik percentage dan ninga manggagi na manai ekungu genugudengi ari. Mangagui gwinik pago para esti nekungu ki publico zakwa ha tariata para iji toota gwinik na taluani. Uh, guaha sia prinuponi. Nitinigi i senedot gwinik zaparta ekungu ki sentimento ni publico dan i opinyon niya podesti sia na prinuponi. Uh, special menti i prinuponi numero niya i bill number two-two-eight, bill number two-four-five, bill number two-one-eight, bill number two-two-five, dan i bill number two-twenty-six. Good afternoon ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this public hearing to be conducted today by the Committee on Appropriations, Public Debt, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Public Recreation, Public Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation, and Land. Today we have before us our agenda, which I have read the bills before us today, uh, which were duly published as required for the open government law. We thank all of you who are here this afternoon, present today in this public hearing room. And of course, we also thank members of the public who are out there listening over the legislative channel. For your information, the legislative channel has now been switched to, I think, channel number one-one-seven. So if you can't find it on, uh, because you're looking for the old channel at thirteen, it is now being moved to one-one-seven. Um, before we begin, uh, hearing the agenda, I would like to thank all members of the legislature and my colleagues who have joined me this afternoon uh, in and during this public hearing. To my extreme left is Senator Eileen Yamashita, and next to her is Senator Tonyada. Senator Brad McCready follows, and Senator Limteako is to my immediate left. On my right is Senator Christopher Duñez, Senator Michael San Nicholas, the Majority Leader, Senator Robert Fisheau, the Speaker of the Guam Legislature, Senator and Speaker Judy Wampat, and our Legislative Secretary, Senator Tina Rose Munoz Barnes. Thank you and sedus mahasi, ladies and gentlemen. We will go ahead and begin immediately by going into the agenda as published. Uh, and we will begin with bill number two-two-eight, uh, dash thirty-two introduced by Senator Michael San Nicholas, an act to exempt beneficiaries of the defined benefit retirement plan from suspension of the annuity payments for limited-term appointments as school bus drivers or automotive mechanics, and by amending subsection A of section eight-one-two-one, Article One, Chapter Eight, Title Four, Guam Code Annotated. We have signed up for bill number two-two-eight. Mister Carl Dominguez, please come forward. Before we begin, I would like to go ahead and give the opportunity for the author uh, to give us a short synopsis of the intent behind his bill. Mister San Nicholas.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Director Dominguez, thank you for joining us today. In a hearing that we had together several months ago, uh, we're talking about the need for us to, um, work, um, more closely on making sure that our bus operations are more fluid. And one of the things that were brought up in our, um, hearing was that we have a very difficult time, um, getting the drivers and the mechanics that we need in order to fully service our fleet and to fully operate our fleet. And, um, one of the things that we talked about was the, um, need for us to think outside the box in order to be able to bring more drivers, more mechanics onboard to be able to meet the needs of DPW, so we can get as many school buses running for our kids as possible, so we can get them fixed as quickly as possible, and so that our drivers are also able to have the right shifts and, and they're able to, you know, be there when someone's sick or somebody's out, because we have a limited number of drivers relative to the number of buses that we're looking to increase in our fleet. So I introduced this bill, um, bill number two-two-eight, which basically would allow, um, retired bus drivers or retired mechanics to maintain their retirement annuity, but still come back into the system so they can do their job of driving the kids to school or making sure the fleet is maintained. Uh, we have a lot of great drivers who've retired. We have a lot of great mechanics who've retired. And, uh, I think it'd be, it'd be a fine idea for us to be able to bring these guys back in, keep their retirement annuity, but also earn, uh, their salary working for DPW once again, getting our, our bus services fleet, um, up to par. So, um, it's, it's a really simple bill. It extends the, um, current provisions under law that allow other, um, types of employees to work in the government while also getting their retirement annuity. But it further extends that the school bus drivers and automotive mechanics in DPW, so we can address this, uh, employee shortfall that's hampering the, um, the fully efficient operation of our fleet. So I thank you, Mister Chairman, for the opportunity, and thank you, Mister Dominguez, for joining us today.
Thank you very much, Senator San Nicholas. I also had signed up, I'm sorry if I forgot, Mister Joanne L. Grimes from the law firm of Carl Smith &amp; Ball, who is a legal counsel to the Retirement Fund. Uh, Miss Grimes, you may join us at the table if you were going to provide comment on this bill as well. Please, I, uh, before we start, please identify yourself for the record, uh, and make sure the light is on and the microphone. Pull it up, uh, you don't have to pull it very close to you. Uh, they're sensitive microphones, and then begin presenting your comments. Carl, I had Joanne sign up first, so we'll go ahead and have her, uh, make the comments. You need to press the button?
Thank you. Thank you, Mister Chair and Committee Members. My name is Joanne Grimes. I'm a attorney with Carl Smith &amp; Ball, and I've worked for the Retirement of Guam since around nineteen ninety-six. And, um, my testimony is oral, and it's neither in support or opposing the bill. It's just to offer some comments, because I've studied section eighty-one-twenty-one for all of these years, and I'm familiar with, um, previous bills to, um, add categories to the list of employees who are exempted from the suspension of annuity provisions of the bill, and in other words, who are allowed to double dip. So I just offer these comments as observations, um, rather than a comment that of, of how it impacts the fund. Um, uh, and I should say that, um, listening to the, um, background introduction, I now understand that there is, um, some public policy reasons to expand this class of people, and those policy reasons weren't all, um, in the written, um, bill. So the questions that I had about the bill were because the legislative intent did not seem as expansive. Because with prior bills, what I generally look for are, um, critical need, a lack of availability of employees. There's either some health concern or public safety concern involved, and, um, the government needs cannot be outsourced. Uh, my concern with the way that the bill was drafted, that if there's simply the reason that it, um, re-employment of a retired, uh, defined benefit plan member, if it's a disincentive, if that alone is the criteria, then it can be opened up to everyone, because of course it's a disincentive to return if your annuity's going to be, um, suspended. So I would just, my observation is in with any of these categories of expansion of section eighty-one-twenty-one, that the policy be very clear that somehow there's the government need that is weighing in favor of these expansions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Miss Grimes. Um, Mister Speaker, Speaker Sinagustin, Chairman of the Retirement Fund, former Speaker of the Legislature here as well.
Thank you, Mister Speaker, and members of the... I just came in to, excuse me, support what our legal counsel is, that we're concerned on the overall policy on the government standpoint. As far as the fund impact, it's very minimal impact, because these people will go right at, right at the back into the DC side, and they will still be contributing basically to the, to the fund. Uh, the problem will be in the previous legislation that they would go to Social Security. That one we would not, we would oppose, because you will not be in direct support to the fund. The retired, the guys that are retired, really, uh, they want to come back, and in the previous legislation, you established a need, there's a critical need for this kind of, uh, particular position. Now, uh, and difficult to recruit. That's always been an established policy to go as you know, Mister Speaker. But a school bus driver, you always want to know, wonder, is that really a bad situation that the, the, the time to train, uh, a school bus driver and to get him qualified, and is it that in a critical sort, as you would put them in the same category of, say, a, a school teacher or an engineer, or a, for that matter, even a law enforcement? But you're always looking from a government standpoint, but from the Retirement Fund, the impact is very minimal, because it just goes out one door and comes right back. Uh, but, but you, as policymakers, being spending twelve, over twenty years on that side of the table, I have to look at it on, what is the impact to the overall government financial position? Second, what is this, is any incentive to be able to recruit additional people? Uh, your unemployment is not a, is not a, unemployment on Guam is not a, is not really, uh, you know, very attractive in a sense, that, uh, that I don't see, I tell you need difficulty in recruiting school bus drivers. Is that a situation, now, is that a situation for them like, uh, a school, a teacher, or an engineer, or law enforcement? I can see that, or even a, a medical profession. But when you come up to, get a level, where do you draw the line? School bus driver today, tomorrow could be bookkeeper, next day we'll be account clerk, next one you do that. And then what you're doing is you're limiting the number of pool talent, basically. The government, the people of Guam, in a sense, are not getting the best services. And you, you don't grow in that way. You have a lot of people graduating each year from a high school, and these are kids also looking for jobs. And it's not a matter, you don't need to go to college to be a school bus driver. Uh, you don't need to grow any kind of additional professional skill. So you have to look at it from your side. As I said, from our standpoint, it's very minimal impact to the fund. But you got to look at it, because in the long run, first of all, you, you actually hamper, uh, people wants to work for the government. Or what, basically, you're, you're retreating the same group of people, and you're not getting the good, I don't know whether you're getting the good services. You have to grow. You have to provide employment opportunity so the thousands of kids are, are graduating. And that's what I'm concerned. Otherwise, uh, this is your bailiwick. This is a government, government Guam policy. The policy leaders have to decide that. What is good for Guam and what is the future impact? And where, where do we go from here? School bus driver now, tomorrow account clerk, next one's a bookkeeper, next one? We already went through that. I think we went through the process of, when we first talked about, you know, where the, uh, uh, school teachers, for instance, the, it's a word, language speaker. Then you go to the doctors, professionals, nurses, then the law enforcement, revenue agent. You keep on going down the line. You just want, you, you exhaust all the positions. You might as well have anybody can, be able to just spend the minimum time of government servicing, turn it right around. It's going to be like, uh, like a supermarket, so to speak. I, I don't, I, I venture to see what's going to happen to our government Guam policy twenty years from now. What kind of people you will have? You, you, government Guam needs additional people, need new people to grow, and you have to provide job opportunity. Remember, government Guam is the largest employer in the island. And you have to provide that opportunity for young kids that are coming here too. That's what I'm concerned about. Otherwise, it's your bailiwick, Mister Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Siedus Mahasi, Mister Speaker. Uh, Mister Dominguez.
My name is Carl Dominguez. I'm the Director of the Department of Public Works. Um, good afternoon, Mister Chairman and members of the committee. Uh, I want to thank Senator San Nicholas for introducing the bill. We're, we're in support of the bill. I, I understand the concerns on this side of the table. Uh, but I, I read, I, I read the bill, I read the bill as it is, and that is that we, uh, it, it's not an open invitation to hire, uh, retired, uh, automotive mechanics or bus drivers. It's not carte blanche for DPW to do that. It's, it's quite clear that, uh, that such person occupies such position which no, uh, for which no other qualified slash certified applicants were available. So I, I just see this as just an option for DPW to, uh, be, be able to fill its ranks if, if we find ourselves in a situation where we're in a very difficult situation, um, uh, filling, filling bus drivers and automotive mechanic positions. Uh, recently, we've been able to hire, um, uh, bus, uh, school bus drivers, but, uh, they, you know, when you hire somebody off the street who hasn't driven the bus before, there's, it's quite a long process. Um, my own observation, it's anywhere from two to five months. It can be, it can take that long. Um, and again, uh, if, if there are no other qualified applicants and we really need these positions filled by taking on a retired school bus driver, for example, they, they have a D license already, they, they don't have, uh, they, they just need a couple of days refresher course on, uh, on safe driving techniques and that sort of thing. So we can, we can put them, uh, behind the wheel of a school bus, uh, at a fraction of the time it would take to, uh, to, uh, put a rookie behind the wheel of a school bus. So, uh, that's, that's my testimony this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and sedus mahasi, Mister Dominguez. Senator San Nicholas, did you have any additional comments or questions?
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Just some, just some additional background information. You know, I, I, I fully appreciate and respect the comments about us needing to do whatever we can to bring down the unemployment rate. You know, we have dozens of students sitting here, and the more we can find jobs for the kids, the better, you know? But there's also some very hard realities that our bus drivers face that a lot of you guys don't even realize. And, um, and these hard realities are, are some of the challenges that they've, they've shared with me. And one of them is that, you know, our bus drivers, uh, they work very, very hard, and they don't make a lot of money. You know, Carl, could you, if you could share with us, please, uh, what the hourly rate is for our bus drivers right now?
Uh, for a newly hired, uh, bus driver today? Eight forty-eight an hour.
Eight dollars and forty-eight cents an hour. Um, and the minimum wage, just for the record, is seven dollars and twenty-five cents an hour. Do you know what the, um, the rate is right now? Roughly speaking in gen, in, on average, um, for bus drivers in the private sector?
Um, yes, I, I think I heard, uh, at least fifteen.
At least fifteen dollars an hour.
At least fifteen, yes.
So for a bus driver to come in and take you guys to school, they're basically taking a seven-dollar pay cut from what they could be making in the private sector. And one of the challenges that DPW faces in recruitment for bus drivers isn't just, um, you know, being able to say, here's a government job and come and apply for it. It's, um, having to compete with that other opportunity out there. And the real options for our government, you know, we ask ourselves, are we going to increase bus driver pay? You know, and, and, uh, bring more bus drivers in to match what the private sector's paying? Do we have the money for that? Or at the very least, can we try and come up with creative ways to allow these bus drivers to not only draw their annuity and augment their income, but then also, as they're driving our buses, to be able to earn additional income on top of that annuity? That will probably almost just bring them close to what they'd be making in the private sector anyway. You know, um, a lot of our drivers, uh, they work very odd hours. I know, uh, going to school, I went to public school, and, uh, we got to wake up really early to get on that bus. There's a bus driver out there who's waking up so much earlier to fire up that engine, get that bus ready, and take us to school. And they're doing it for eight dollars and forty-eight cents an hour, you know, entry level. So I, I want to, um, um, just extend my continued support for DPW and for our drivers, and, uh, you know, the hard work that they do, and, and recognize that, you know, our compensation levels in the government with respect to that particular position is nowhere near what they could be earning in the private sector. So not only are they hard-working government employees, but they're truly public servants to be willing to do all that work that they, that they're basically getting so much less pay for. And, um, I know some of our drivers are probably close to retirement, and maybe some of them may retire and, and take advantage of this opportunity as well. And you know what, more power to them. Because not only did they earn that annuity, but they're going to go out there and take their skills and save our government months and months and months of training time, um, to be able to get those buses back on the road for our kids. And the same goes for our mechanics too. So, um, I, I'd like to thank the Retirement Fund for sharing their perspective, and Carl for sharing yours, and I'd just like to thank our, uh, DPW employees as well. We recognize the sacrifices you guys make. And, um, at the very least, I'm looking forward to, hopefully, moving this opportunity forward so that we can get more, uh, more of your brothers and sisters to help you out on the job, you know? So that you're not carrying a whole load with only one arm to, to help you along the way. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator San Nicholas. Speaker Wampat, did you have any questions or comments? Senator Barnes? Senator Fisheau? Senator Duñez? Senator Dupree? Senator McCready? Senator Ada?
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Uh, Carl, how many operational school buses do we currently have?
Uh, right now, this, this past, uh, two weeks or so, we've had roughly about a hundred eighteen.
Hundred and eighteen? And how many drivers do we have?
We have a hundred and twenty.
A hundred and twenty?
Yes.
So, you know, um, how many drivers are you looking at, um, bringing on as a, um, well, retired and bringing back into active service?
On, on average, we have about a hundred and eighteen buses on, on the road on any school day. But we, in the fleet, we, uh, I reported a hundred and thirty-nine, oh, about three or four months ago, to, uh, Senator San Nicholas during this oversight hearing. And as of this afternoon, I, we've lost two more buses. When I say, when I say that, one bus was involved in an accident where, um, and it's old enough that, uh, we, we don't want to pour money into the bus. And then we, we've lost a second bus recently to mechanical failure. And we've also determined that, uh, we would be throwing good money after bad, pouring it into this bus. Uh, so that leaves, uh, in the fleet, really, a hundred and thirty-seven. So a hundred, a hundred and seventeen minus one thirty-seven, or one thirty-seven minus roughly a hundred and seventeen to a hundred and eighteen. It's about nineteen to twenty buses that, that are in the shop waiting for parts to, to put back on the road. Uh, but then this summer, we're expecting, uh, at least a dozen new sixty-passenger buses, uh, with the, uh, DOI funding that we have. And so, uh, uh, and, and also over the summer, we really hope to get that fleet back up to really close to that hundred and thirty-seven mark. So you, you added, and we're approaching a hundred and fifty buses.
So you're looking to bring on an additional twenty, thirty drivers?
Yes. That would be nice.
How many mechanics do you currently have on hand?
Uh, I think we have, uh, nine or ten. Nine or ten mechanics for a hundred and...
And how many mechanics are you looking to bring onboard?
Um, three more.
Three more?
Three more, yeah. Short-term, three more.
Okay. And you already checked out there that there are no, um, mechanics or...
Uh, no, my, my superintendent reports that in the last year or two, um, uh, we've, you know, uh, we've tried to recruit mechanics through, through DOI, DOI, of course, but, uh, he, he told me he's noticed that there's been less of a response this past year or two, you know, to the, to the openings announced by DOI for mechanics. And the suspicion is that, um, there, there might be a shortage of qualified mechanics out there, and that the private sector is, uh, attracting them more than we are.
Have you, have you spoken with General Polino? And see how many mechanics he has that's, that came back from Afghanistan?
Uh, no, not yet, no.
Not yet? So maybe there'd be a source too that you can check and whatever unemployed, uh, mechanics that just returned from Afghanistan, we'd be able to pick them up and, you know?
Yes, uh, I, I think we have, uh, two, two or three GG ones at DOI right now for recruitment.
Okay. And then I was also looking at the, the, the title, and it says automotive, automotive vehicle mechanic, right? Automotive mechanics. Is that the title for the school bus mechanic? Or is that just a, is that the general mechanic for buses or vehicles?
Uh, it's, it's just a general, uh, description for mechanic, yes.
Yeah, so they fix both the buses and, and the, uh...
Uh, again, uh, it, it would be, depending on the qualifications uh, in their resume, it, it could be, it, it could be a rookie. With a little bit of background.
Yeah, that's why I was asking. So there would be a learning curve, yeah, to fix the... So instead of automotive mechanic, would it be a school bus mechanic? That you're trying to bring back in, or just auto... That's a... So that's the, uh, the official automotive mechanic two? Two? So there's, yeah. That's also paid to my superintendent, the transportation major. That's what I was trying to get, because I, I, you know, when you look up for, there's this police officer, one, two, and three, and I'm trying to find out whether automotive mechanic or is it school bus mechanic? So it's automotive mechanic one and two?
Okay. Senator San Nicholas, if I may, oh, I'm sorry, Mister Chairman. Okay. Uh, that, that's all I have. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you very much. Senator Yemcito.
May I, may I ask, uh, Mister Chairman, a question of, uh, Mister Senator San Nicholas? Uh, in, in the draft legislation here, uh, it said that the employment shall be on a fiscal year basis. And that was one of our concerns, um, that if we attempted to recruit, say, in the month of June or July, uh, we would be going through this training process. Uh, would we, by, by this forbage, would we be required to let the, uh, the recruit go on September thirty? And, and that was one of our concerns.
Well, I'm sure the author will look at that. All right. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much, sedus mahasi, to the panel for their presentation this afternoon on bill number two-two-eight. We'll proceed to the next item on the agenda. The next item on the agenda is bill number two-four-five, introduced by myself, an act to amend sections eight-one-four-four, eight-one-four-five, eight-one-four-nine, Article One, Chapter Eight, Title Four, Guam Code Annotated, relative to custodians, investment agents, and bank deposits. Um, very briefly, the, um, the bill would, um, uh, set some licensing guidelines for consultants of the Government of Guam that manage its money. And, uh, this was, uh, made necessary as a result of a previous law that was passed, uh, that, uh, the, upon review, may have created some, uh, issues that, uh, were not clearly identified during the time the amendment was made and discussed and enacted. Uh, and the Retirement Fund felt that it was necessary to much more clearly define what would be the appropriate licensing requirements for those consultants that it retains to manage and advise it on the investment of the beneficiaries' money. And, uh, at this time, we have, uh, with us, uh, Ms. Maggie Robowski, uh, Chairman of the Retirement Board and former Speaker Jote Sinagustin is here as well, and of course, Miss Joanne Grimes. We'll start with Joanne, since you signed up first, and then we'll proceed down the line. Thank you and welcome, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Mister Chair and Committee Members. The Retirement Fund for Support, Bill Two-four-five, and I'd like to give a little background as to the origins of this bill. For a number of years now, the Fund has been proposing, um, changes to the Defined Benefit Plan Investment Statute, which is a statute that governs how the funds held in trust for benefits of its members are invested. The Defined Benefit Plan Statute is essentially what's known as a legal list. It tells what is permissible to be invested, and the managers who manage the fund's assets, um, look at the statute, and they, uh, have entire legal departments that make sure that they comply, because these are, um, important matters for compliance. Bill one-seventy, that was later enacted into law, public law thirty-two-dash-zero-eight-six, was a result of an almost two-year effort to amend some of the statutes, uh, that, uh, and, and increase the flexibility of the Board of Trustees to get the greatest opportunity to manage the funds, um, with changing markets. And Ms. Robowski can go into more detail on the details of that. Um, but the basic intent was to eliminate unintended results because of the way that all, a lot of different provisions of the statute worked together. So, um, Bill seventy was of that effort, um, and it passed in the law. And a few of the provisions that were added, we, we are suggesting tweaking them because we think it is going to result in consequences that were not intended, um, in terms of protection of the fund. You know, before going into the proposed deletions, I thought I would give a background so you would understand how the Retirement Fund is managed. Um, it's all assets of one-point-five-six billion. The Retirement Fund Board hires consultants, including actuaries, who, um, in consultation with the board, including actuaries, who, um, in consultation with the board, develop a plan to, uh, invest the assets with an assumed rate of return. And with that assumed rate of return, they work with investment consultants to help design an app, an asset allocation for those, um, the fund's, um, portfolio consistent with the assumed rate of return, given that risk profile. That happens to be Wilshire Associates and Maggie Robowski's here for Wilshire. Um, then with Wilshire's assistance, investment managers are hired to manage, um, the trust assets in various asset classes. And just to by way of example, it's going to be a show and tell, this happens to be a third quarter report. Um, this is a pie chart showing the investments, um, in four asset cla- uh, 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 classifications, real estate, US equity, international, US fixed income. And among those classes, managers are hired, and it happens that, as a third quarter, there are four domestic equity managers, four international equity managers, three fixed income managers, and three real estate managers. Um, Bill one-seventy, later enacted into law, would have, um, provided for, um, certain additional level, um, asset managers managing certain types of fixed income classes, which Maggie can go into. Um, the fund was about to issue RFPs to solicit certain fixed income managers. But as a result of some of these changes, I think it's going to inhibit the ability of the fund to seek, uh, those investment managers. Um, going back to the management, um, in order to ensure that the trust assets are protected, the trustees meet with their managers annually and they go over how the manager performed during that year. They meet quarterly with Wilshire, they go over the manager's, um, performance over the quarter period, and the, um, fund also looks at monthly reports. Um, by the way, the quarterly reports, I think, are provided to Mr. Chair. So the monitoring of the managers, um, is periodic and consistent with industry standards. Um, the addition of some of the, uh, provisions in Bill, uh, one-seventy, we think are going to detract from the ability, um, to carefully and thoroughly monitor. Um, if I could turn to, um, the proposed provisions right now. In section eight-one-four-four, which deals with custodians, um, oh, let me back up. Bill one-seventy raised the tier-one capital requirements for banks, uh, custodians, bank trust companies from ten million to one billion dollars. That's a significant jump, and we think that the increase in those, the assets or the capital, tier-one capital, is sufficient to ensure that we're talking with big players. Um, the addition of the in any rolling twelve-month period, we believe is unnecessary to ensure that the vendor is indeed big. But the bigger concern is, in any rolling twelve-month period, can be viewed as meaning any twelve-month period? In fact, a period that may occur not prior to the time of measurement. As it stands now, there are at least three periods of time where capital is measured. One, when, um, a vendor proposes under an RFP, two at the time of contracting, and then again upon monitoring. So we think that those levels are sufficient, and a more frequent measurement does not materially add to the protection of the fund, and in fact, um, can be misinterpreted to not, uh, applying to the period of contracting. A similar concern is raised with the measurement of any twen- twelve-month rolling period for measurement of assets under management for investment agents. Again, Bill one-seventy raised the asset under management from two-hundred million to one billion. We think that that is sufficient to ensure that the managers are big. Um, Ms. Robowski will, uh, review later the asset levels of the fourteen managers retained by the fund. And if I just, um, might speak a, a little bit on monitoring? The monitoring that I, um, explained to you on annual, quarterly, and monthly, we believe is sufficient to protect the fund and that a continual level of, um, monitoring, which may be interpreted, uh, uh, because of lack of clarification, to mean almost daily, is onerous and probably would not be, um, material effective for the amount of time spent to monitor on almost a daily basis. And it's very, it's not common, so I think that for purposes of the fund, of the trustees, delegating to its investment consultant to do monitoring, I think that would be a difficult, um, duty to delegate. And I want to move on now to the other four amendments that required investment consultants to be in good standing with the Financial Industry Regulatory Authority, FINRA, and the Securities and Exchange Commission on a continuous and ongoing basis. Firstly, on a continuous and ongoing basis, similarly, again, the, the ongoing and continuous basis could mean, you know, it, it's ridiculous, but it could be second by second, but it's, it, for a daily or monthly, it's, um, it, it's, it's a little bit too often to monitor whether someone's in good standing. And I think that, uh, periodic monitoring being done now is sufficient to protect the fund. Um, more importantly, though, um, the FINRA requirements, I believe, for the investment consultants and the investment, um, managers, uh, retained by the fund are not necessary because none of them are broker-dealers who are, would be the members of the Financial Industry Regulatory Association, uh, authority. So the requirements would be unnecessary and, um, would limit the types of managers who would be answering, um, the fund's requests for proposals. As drafted now, when combined with the one billion dollars of assets under management, as well as the requirement that a member be, or a manager be a FINRA member, would result in, um, really only a few firms being able to be an investment manager because they would really be the big broker-dealer firms, the names that you have on the tip of your tongue. From the investment consultant side, which is the role that Wilshire plays, that, um, develops the asset allocation and helps the fund, um, hire managers, um, section eighty-one-four-three-B already prohibits broker-dealers or firms that serve as principal or, uh, as a broker for other clients. They cannot be investment consultants. So if they also must be a FINRA member, I think that would just knock out all potential firms from being able to serve as investment consultants. So I think that, um, the, the purposes of the, um, additional language were very well-intentioned but are, may result in, um, internal inconsistencies within the statute and probably not, um, providing the, uh, protection that is desired. And the, the fund greatly appreciates the business background and the intent behind the amendments and would, would, would love to work with anyone, um, seeking to amend the investment statute. It's a very, very complicated statute, as all legal list statutes are. It's not a generalized prudent investor rule. There's a lot of moving pieces and once, one, um, amendment in one provision can easily conflict with another provision. So it, it, it is a, a very complicated statute, um, but I believe that the protections, um, that were in place before Bill one-seventy was in place are adequate to protect the fund. Lastly, um, there's a requirement of being, um, in good standing with the Securities and Exchange Commission on a continuous and ongoing basis. And I would like to say that that provision, I believe, is already being met because section eight-one-four-five-C four already requires all investment agents to comply with the, um, and all investment advisors to comply with the laws of the United States. Those laws include the Securities and Exchange Act of nineteen thirty-three, nineteen thirty-four, the Investment Advisory Act of nineteen forty. So all of those things are in place and require them, the, um, vendors to the fund to file what's known as a form ADV that's filed upon the proposal, that's filed at contract, and that's what Wilshire monitors, um, on a periodic basis. And every manager that is, has a material change in their status must file with the SEC. So luckily, the SEC laws are already out there and operating, and we are tagging along with, uh, the SEC laws, uh, to protect the fund. So I, I believe that the, uh, SEC protections are already in place without needing to have that, um, amendment. Not that it's a bad amendment, it's, it's, it's fine, but, um, I think maybe what's problematic is it may not be possible to get a good standing certificate from the SEC. Um, I, and I'm not sure, um, if, if that's possible. So, um, rather than creating a, um, requirement that may not be achievable, I think we can rely on the existing provisions, um, in the statute. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Grimes. Um, Speaker Sinagustin, did you have any additional comments, and then we'll proceed with Nick.
Uh, well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My voice is a little... You know, one of the things I observed, by the way, the panel, you got the legislature right here. Who's missing, VJ Cruz and who's the other one?
I think it's somebody.
Yeah, you got everybody, right, didn't you? So, uh, first of all, I want to thank, uh, the legislature for passing the original bill. Uh, as you know, you, we, Speaker, and the rest of the committee, and our, our staff and investment con- I worked on this bill for more than two years, uh, back and forth, we talked about it. It's really unfortunate that at the last day, uh, we could have met together and maybe talk about the amendment. Nevertheless, uh, it has gone through and, um, it appears that, uh, we were right there on the, on the track right now. Uh, we have progressed with it. So to give you some, the rest of the members, a, an appreciation of the fund, as, as Joanne said, we got over five, one point five billion dollars now. We're generating around fifteen million dollars each month just to pay our retirees. Uh, we have roughly over fifteen thousand members, and we're generating a, a return of at least twenty-one, fourteen to twenty-one percent per year at this point in time. Now, by this provision, the way the law now is, it would limit basically our potential for earning capacity because it would restrict the number of people that can deal with. Uh, so the flexibility of the fund that we have worked for more than, let's say, twenty years has now been basically, uh, derailed, so to speak, if I might want to say that. You work hard on it and a lot of people that work hard on this thing. For the last nineteen ninety-five, the fund has only experienced a two fiscal year loss of a three, one point four in two thousand and two, a fourteen percent in two thousand and eight because of the overall recession, and in two thousand and eleven, a two percent. But over that, in nineteen ninety-five, it's been averaging over fifteen percent per year. So, p- because of the investment, uh, portfolio and diversification itself, and the way it's managed through the investment manager, right down to the, uh, the allocation process, uh, that provide us the necessary flexibility to diversify the fund. Uh, we just don't put it all in the United States market, put all of the, we do invest all over the world. Uh, you have to be able to show that the, the people are, we're generating over fifteen million dollars a ye- a month just to pay off the annuities. And we have to assure that, otherwise, we're going to have to go back to you guys to raise the contribution rate. Uh, and I don't, and you and I, Mr. Speaker, share that, that, that's, uh, you, something that we spend min- many times. Many times, you said, well, how can we control the cost of, of the pension fund? The unfunded contribution alone is around twenty-six percent. And every time you go through this thing, well, I don't know, I will not venture to guess all these double-dipping. What does that impact going to be unfunded? Because you put them all in retirement, that's it going to, uh, luckily, that they're going to go to DC and they continue to pay yet. So the government in itself is going to be paying twice, but that's the policy, that's your policy call. Uh, from the fund itself, we need to be able to satisfy the seven, over seven, eight thousand retirees there now. Uh, and, and they're growing, uh, they, they keep on going and the, the survivors, uh, are, are out there. Uh, we need to keep this fund moving so that to assure them. We certainly don't want to go far to see what a mismanaged fund can be. All we have to do is go twenty-one miles, hundred twenty-one miles to the north, about, see what's happening to our poor neighbors because of, of poor mismanagement of the fund. We have to be on the lookout at all times, as you know, Mr. Speaker. We, we need to, that, the, the diversification of the fund. The fund started off with very centralized. I remember that time when you can only invest it on, on bank securities. I remember I had to go to Bank America in San Francisco, we put the money on the first floor on the, on the savings account, and we would just go upstairs and put them on a, on, on a TCD. And that's not going to, so we, we, back in nineteen seventy, seventy, so it's, I would expand it. We have expanded to the point that we're now increasing the benefits. Our security ratio is, I've actually, it's not something to be proud of, but at least we're able to provide the people that we are working for the benefits. We, we so, you know, we got about this seven thousand retirees, they were averaging around, say, thirty thousand dollars in annuity, and you're generally, I'll still, let's say, I give them eighteen hundred dollars a month, eighteen hundred dollars a year. That's added plus the forty-two hundred dollars of supplemental income. That's added to, to these people that are in the low income. So, when you look at it, these are the people that foster this government. We cannot ignore them. So we must protect the fund and all of it, and we must, need to grow. Uh, you suggested earlier, we took discussions, Mr. Speaker, that perhaps a roundtable discussion. And then, maybe it's time that we need to know, be able to get our members of the legislature and the body, that this is one point six billion dollars asset. And that's why the, the tier in, in the fund was raised from a two-hundred million to a one billion, two billion dollars, huh? One billion, because we want, we, we need to protect our fund. We're not going to deal with people that are on, that has less than our fund. Uh, so when you're talking about limiting the pool of resources that we can avail ourselves, then what you're doing is you're raising the cost. You're actually raising the investment cost, competition's going to be lessened. You have to diversify to widen the set. And I, I can see the intent, now FINRA, I understand, is only a brokerage firm. They're not necessarily have to remember investment counsel, investment consultant. And we have the regulation that says that. Now, there's nothing wrong with being members of FINRA, but why limit yourself to just this group of people? There are other people who are not necessarily FINRA. The law maybe say brokerage firm, FINRA, because that's what it's set for. But must you say that the investment counsel, the investment advisor, must be members of FINRA? Look, limit, limit in the competition, you limit in, that's like s- source of supply. If you got the main source of supply, you can dictate the price. And I, I saw you yesterday, Mr. Speaker, when you argue on the, on that loan program, that now that we make the loan very nice, the first security, why not ask for concession, right? Of course, because I'm now going to be sitting on the other side of the table, but, you know, the, the higher interest rate, why not? But you can negotiate, that's why the bond rate, you just took a look at the bond rating. The better secure the bond, the rate of interest goes down, you know that. The more secure the loan, which is now by providing the true of attorney fees involved, but then at the same time, as Senator Sinikla said, why suggest that? You're saying then that, that if you're going to be sure the lender that you're going to get the coupon attorney fee, that means you potentially, that loan's going to default. Why suggest that? We, it, that's why most court decisions, the court usually allow, permit to recover on attorney fee. It's up to the court to decide, what's reasonable attorney fee to recover. But just the thought of it, that you say, well, in event it's going to default, we'll make sure that everything, whatever, take the whole, whole barrel in together to recover. Then that means the risk, that makes the loan become very risky, therefore, the rate's going to go up, right? But by what you said last night, by making it so secure, why not get concession, right? So the same thing here, when you limit the pool of resources, you limit the pool of investment advice, then that means who's going to dictate the price? And we're, we're out here dealing with the market all over the world. We have emerging markets in China, in Germany, all over the country. Our fund is so diversified, without the diversification, I'll be very honest with you, we're going to be like the next door neighbor. We won't be able to meet the fifteen million dollar payroll each month. Now, I ask members of the Congress to consider the work that you did and the last, for the last two years, and to have this bill dead on the track. We need to move, we need, we, we need to progress, we need to expand. We got one point five billion dollars, we're the largest trust fund on Guam, really. As I, you, you know, the la- just last year, we had a big argument about administration. As I, you, you know, the la- just last year, we had a big argument about administration, wanna tie one to it. And I thank the legislature for not allowing that. This is belong to the employees, it does not belong to the government of Guam. We are trustees of the fund, of the employees' fund, and nothing coming more. The fiduciary responsibility that we and these other members of the board are so honored ourselves that we can lose our home. None of you can lose your home for what you're doing before. None of these people in the back cabin will lose their home. But this board, they make a big mistake, they're gonna have to, we do out there, our lo- our homes are in state. The same thing as we did as you remember the Guam Memorial Hospital. We sued the direct trustee of the, of the Guam Memorial Hospital Board, and the members of that board got their home assessed. Remember that? And that's the same thing. You have to treat this people's money, this is a sacred trust. And I ask each one of you, please, let us talk about it. Do you want to change anything? Let's talk about it, let's discuss it. Mr. Sinagastin, I appreciate all your work, all your effort, and you're very sincere in the thing, but let's talk about it. Let's discuss it. We know, I may not have the monopoly or that, but at least we discuss it. And, and the bottom line, obviously, he, you folk is gonna have to take the burden if something happens. We can lose our home, maybe that's, but if something happens, you're gonna be faced with fifteen thousand in government for, and retirees. Is that the legacy that we wanna leave them? I certainly don't want to do that. And I ask you people, please, give us the opportunity. You can over, you have oversight, you have adequate resources, we're open, we're very transparent. I have all the charts here, and you can look all you want. And I anticipate, looking forward, Mr. Chairman, our on-table discussion, where we can really look at it. Where is our money going through, where did it go? We, we love to invest on Guam, but you know, this is what I do. There's not that much investment opportunities on there to assure the safety of the fund and to get that kind of interest rate. So, Mr. Speaker, please consider the amendment, let's talk about it, and let's make changes, and let's work on it. Let's try it for one year, you, right now, we're dead on the track, we can't do anything. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, and if you keep telling us you have one point five billion, the governor's gonna want... The governor's gonna want to borrow some money to fix Sanchez.
Well, that, that's what you want, remember you, they try to do that indirectly.
Thank you very much, Maggie. Uh, please identify yourself for the record and begin your testimony.
Your turn, Maggie.
I need to. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, thank you, uh, committee members. My name is Maggie Rabalski, I work for Wilshire Associates. We are the investment consultants to the, uh, in, to the retirement fund. Uh, first, I'd like to echo what the chairman just mentioned, uh, uh, that I applaud the passing of Bill one seventy. Thank you. I think the new law was a big step forward from the original, uh, statute, investment statute. The original statute was first drafted in the nineteen fifties. At the time, it probably was, um, state of the art, but, um, the world, um, evolved since then. A lot of new development happened in the financial markets. The new, uh, law will give us a lot of new tools to access some of the, uh, financial market segments that the old law actually prohibits us from accessing, which will result in a more diversified portfolio and, uh, uh, we expect a positive impact to the long-term result. Uh, there, now, there are a couple of technicalities in the, uh, new law that actually, um, makes implementation of the new law close to impossible. Um, he- here's why, um, maybe, maybe it would be good to take a step back to talk about the different kind of players in the financial markets. In the beginning of time, there was broker dealers because the securities industry start by helping companies raise money, that's what broker dealers do. Um, bro- uh, the, the, the security firms, they will take a company public, they will issue debt for a particular company to help companies raise money so corporations can, uh, can perform their, their, um, their, their operations. And when, in the, in, in the beginning of time, broker dealers was the source where people go buy assets, buy investment assets. So, you would go to bro- brokerage firm to open an account. The, the brokerage firm will transact on your behalf, and you will own those securities custody at the brokerage firm. So, the brokerage firm, in the beginning of time, performs the functions of cust- custodian, investment manager, as well as a person who does the transaction. Now, as time goes on, those duties were actually separated. Um, and today, if you look at all the public funds in the US, virtually, nobody uses a broker dealer as the, the co- consultant or custodian. And the reason is that as time goes on, financial instruments becomes more and more complicated and the broker dealer becomes bigger and bigger, uh, it, it come to the spotlight that if a company, a big broker dealer, issues securities on the one side, trade securities with another, another side of the firm, and manages money in yet another side of the firm, there are many cross dealings within the firm, that becomes a lack, the lack of transparency has, uh, caused a lot of, uh, uh, concerns, especially for public funds. If you just Google, uh, conflict of interest, uh, you will find many, many lawsuits about ten, fifteen years ago, when the model was not unbundled. So, ten, fifteen years ago, when a public fund uses a broker dealer as the source, the beginning source, to do all their transactions, um, what happens was that there are a lot of ancillary services a broker dealer is providing, not directly with the investor, but rather with money managers because money managers have to trade through the broker dealer. They have to participate in the IPOs, whatever the broker dealer is coming up with. The broker dealer may also, uh, uh, transact on a soft dollar basis, which means that, uh, they will provide managers research and managers will direct trades to these firms because they want to get the research. So, there are many, many of these, um, cross dealings that cause concern. Um, so, the development is such that today, if you look at the functions of different, um, kinds of, uh, players play, it's entirely unbundled. So, using GGIF, uh, Retirement Fund as a example, we use Northern Trust as the custodian, which means, doesn't matter which manager you hire, which money manager you hire, hire, the asset is custodied at Northern Trust. And Northern Trust has no say as to what to do with the assets. They take instructions from the di- the money managers. So, for example, um, uh, we, we have a money manager called Eden Benz, which is a small cap manager. Eden Benz is hired to manage the, a particular portion of the assets, but they do not touch the money. Eden Benz does not have custody of the money, there is no way the manager can actually take the money. The manager will make a decision to buy a particular stock and the manager will send this particular, uh, trade to a broker. And this broker will be unrelated to any of the other vendors of the fund, but the manager will shop around to find the best execution source. So, this broker today could be Goldman Sachs, tomorrow could be JP Morgan. Uh, it depends on who can give the manager the best transact, best, um, execution. So, the manager will transact with the broker, and when, once you transact, the settlement happens in three days. So, you do not have to pay them today to buy that stock. You want to buy Apple, you send a trade order through a broker, then the, the settlement will come from Northern Trust. So, Northern Trust will be given the instruction to settle this trade. So, that is how a transaction is done. It is entirely unbundled and each part of the, uh, chain is charging a transparent fee. There is no behind-the-door payment, it is entirely transparent. And also, it also, uh, helps with the multiple sources of, um, of governance. It, it's a good governance structure which can prevent fraud risk as well. Now, if you look at other vendors of, of the, uh, Retirement Fund, Wil- Wilshire, for example, is, we're only providing advice. We do not buy securities, we do not tell the manager what securities to buy, we do not trade with the managers, we do not custody the assets. All we provide is the advice to the board, uh, for a explicit fee. There is no other payment from the managers, entirely, uh, transparent fee structure, entirely hard dollar service. Uh, and the board will be guided by Wilshire and have a discussion, perform their fiduciary duties, and decide on asset allocation. Once the asset allocation is decided, we need to hire managers to populate asset allocation. And based on the procurement law, it is an entirely public process. So, the money manager RFPs will be published on Pension and Investment Magazine, which is the largest, um, mostly widely distributed, um, um, investment management magazine in the country. So, all the managers who are qualified under the minimum requirement will be allowed to submit their bid and the board will evaluate the RFP and select the most competitive bids, uh, to populate those asset locations. So, the board does not decide on which securities to buy, and that's really a second derivative in this whole entire process. Now, the issue I have with the, um, with the requirement of FINRA, um, i- is that it limits our fishing pool to only broker dealers because FINRA is a self-regulatory organization for broker dealers. Only broker dealers are members of FINRA. And if you think about the unbundling I just explained, the money managers who are not affiliated with broker dealers, they're not members of FINRA. Nor they have a need to be members of FINRA because they do not sell securities. They buy securities and they execute through a, a broker dealer. Now, the consultants also are not members of FINRA because we don't even touch the money. We do not need to be security, uh, uh, industry licensed because we don't sell securities. So, FINRA only regulates security dealers, people who actually sell securities. Um, therefore, by requiring, um, um, all the Investment Counsel to be member of FINRA, it will really, basically, there's only one manager in the entire list right now, uh, Guam is using, can qualify. All the managers, actually, they're not members of FINRA, and neither were I, w- were us. So, um, that is really a, a pretty fatal, pretty fa- fatal provision for us to implement this law. That, that is my biggest, uh, issue with the law, is that you cannot, we cannot even go out to send an RFP because if we do that, we're limiting our, our, um, candidate pool to maybe less than ten in the entire world that can qualify. Um, so, that's number one. Uh, I, I also want to provide a little bit background on the, on the a billion dollar requirement for, for minimum AUM. Um, so, if you, we, if we look at the current, uh, managers, we have fourteen managers. The ra- the largest manager has four trillion dollars under management. The smallest manager has three point five billion dollars under management. Now, um, if you think about how investment managers operate, their assets walking out of the door every day, those are the talents, the people, and you will need to be, be able to have enough revenue to pay these people so you can attract talents, uh, to, to manage, to manage assets. Investment manag- main, management industry is a very, very competitive industry. Um, it is very hard for a, for a very small manager to compete for talent. And that is why we think it is important to move up the standard of minimum requirement from two hundred million to a billion. And, and to tell you the truth, a billion dollars is a very small manager in these days. Um, and on average, Guam's managers has an average about fifty to sixty billion dollar under management. So, for a sixty billion dollar manager to drop to a billion, they will have to fire most of their people, if you think about it. So, it is a very high, uh, margin, um, for us to, to, to operate in. Um, and, and I think that's another reason, uh, we didn't think that rolling twelve period, a twelve-month period is necessary because if a manager, our smallest manager, let's say, uh, has three point five billion, if that manager's assets drop to a billion, that means their revenue will drop by sixty-seven percent, which means they will not be able to support all the talents they have. And they will have to fire people, they will have to, you, you will have to do something to, to compensate for the fact that you actually lost sixty-seven percent of your revenue. And, and before they drop to a billion-dollar in assets, the firm probably will disintegrate. So, um, th- that is, um, th- th- that is, the, the truth out there is that the industry has, has really consolidated significantly. Um, it, it becomes very hard for, uh, small managers or startup managers to compete. Now, that is not to say, um, there's not a place for small manager. There are certain niche strategies somebody may come up with that could give room for, for, for new, um, but for the mainstream strategies, really, it is, um, very competitive, especially, you know, when we issue RFP to the entire world, uh, for people to compete, i- i- we're talking about big managers.
I might add, Mr. Speaker, that when, when the asset or people that we deal with drop, that we, as what she does all the time, evaluate, we wouldn't hesitate to fire them because we do not want our asset to be at risk. The minute that firm starts flowing, showing a gradual decline, we just change right away because we don't, we, we know the pathway, we know the trend. We don't, we're not gonna wait till they broke, for us, we wanna get out fast. And believe me, that's why the, the one billion dollar tier, it doesn't have to go down that level. This is a four billion dollar company. The minute they start losing one billion, we're gonna start looking for another firm.
Thank you very much, um, you know, um, Mr. Chairman, uh, Maggie and, and Joanne. Um, one of the things, of course, that, um, we are very conscious of locally, of course, is, you know, social responsibility. And I, I know that, uh, there may be some arguments of this, but we believe that, um, you know, pension funds and such, uh, investment firms, investment funds, uh, some are targeted towards social, have an element of social responsibility as part of their investment strategy. And for the Retirement Fund on Guam, one of the things we've always tried to convince the fund, uh, and maybe even cajoled and forced the fund to consider in the past is its local responsibility to the community, that as a pension fund based in this community, contributions made by income earned in this community, that perhaps the fund should consider investments in the local community as well. Not everything, but of course, a, a portion of it that advances and, and, and enhances everyone else's social and economic, uh, position in the community. And so, one of the things when we were debating these issues was kind of looking at that as being, you know, trying to build that consciousness back into the investment strategy, investment criteria, investment consideration, whichever word you would feel most comfortable with and that we won't overstep our bounds with regards to your fiduciary responsibility. Uh, you know, criteria, uh, condition, et cetera. Um, uh, what, was, that sparked some of this debate and these requirements. And so, one of the things I would like to, to maybe consider, uh, and ask the fund, maybe not in, not in this bill, but certainly in, in, in some future discussions on any additional, uh, changes that we may want to make to the fund, is, is maybe have a small carve-out or a portion of the fund that we understand is gonna be a little bit riskier because of the size and the, and, and the economy base of where we're being, we're investing. But, but provide that opportunity to enhance local capacity, local, local employment and so forth for some of our local investment managers, investment advisors and so forth. Is, is that something that you believe would be within the realm of possibilities that this body could, could work with, with the fund, in providing that, uh, uh, objective, in meeting that objective from a policy point, from this government as it deals with the funds that are funded and populated by the dollars earned by the government workers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think you're talking about, um, the use of, um, local talent on Guam to serve as some sort of investment advisor as opposed to you're talk- talking about direct investments or something in the world. And, and certainly, I think we can discuss with the fund, maybe a, a carve-out of certain, you know, um, certain dollar amount of assets that can be managed by, well, anyone, anyone can respond to an RFP, but maybe that wouldn't have the same, uh, one billion dollar cap on it. Uh, and I think, uh, Ms. Rabalski can speak more toward the type of investment that that would lend itself to, not the traditional, but maybe some alternative type of investments. not the traditional, but maybe some alternative type of investments.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The many state funds actually have carve-outs for values-based investments. So these investments are not with a goal of seeking total return, but rather to support certain values that are important to the sponsor. So some of these programs may be emerging manager program. So there are certain state funds that would carve out a portion to support emerging managers, managers that are startup managers. Then they have to set up certain criteria. There's also carve-outs for minorities, for disabled, for veterans, you name it, or to support social agenda for a particular domicile. Those are definitely have been done. Actually, many, many state funds do have those provisions. But I do think that's independent of the issue we're talking about today.
Yes, I believe it is.
Yes, yes. So I don't think that was off the table because it has been done. It just needs to be done in a thoughtful manner and define what is the important social goals, what's the important values that we want to support.
Yeah, but I wanted to bring that on because that was part of the discussion on the floor in making some of the amendments that was being proposed. Those were some of the thinking behind it, and they may not have perfectly fit together. But those are the issues and those were the concerns and some of the, you know, objectives that some members of the body were looking at. And I think that those are, you know, number one, permissible, number two, desirable in some instances, I think, for our community. And it's just how do we achieve them? And I know that they're not directly linked to the criteria here, so we understand the difference in the two. But those were some of the background in terms of that discussion.
Mr. Speaker, let me comment that the history of the fund has always been on that policy a long time. Just give you a history. The fund did attract a lot of business to Guam. We started McDonald's, for instance. We first started, we financed the McDonald's, first McDonald's for Guam. The duty-free shop first came in. My friend Senator Adas funeral parlor, we did finance that very beginning, way back when it first started. But the opportunity to invest towards the competition. And what's happening, basically, our problem is that we can't provide a less than what we can get on other returns. You can get a return, say, ten percent, someplace else. Why do we want to go down for five percent? That's the point in between. We have a fiduciary relationship for that particular spread. Now, if there is an equal opportunity bond, we buy a lot of mortgages. You may not know, but indirectly, on the mortgages, on the banks, where they sell on the open market, we do participate on mortgages, home FHA insured mortgages, SBA participations all the way through. There's nothing wrong with that. It's there, all you have to do is, but we have to compete with the other bank. Now, if the returns, certainly, you don't want us to lend money at less than the firm market value or less than, say, two percent. When we get that money, we can only ten percent. I don't know why I can justify that, to be able, just because of socially motivation. Because I want to socially invest on Guam, let's put it that way. But it's still at less, at one percent when I can get ten percent elsewhere. We have fifteen, we have fiduciary responsibility on the members of the fund.
Well, I certainly understand that.
I can see competition, yes.
Yes.
We welcome it.
But once again, there are instances where funds make that conscious decision to do so. And it's kind of like getting veterans' points on your application.
No, there's a lot of people, they're welcome. People come to the fund, ask them disadvantage, one of those things. But it's got to be at a rate where we'd be stuck if, we can get a return on the same amount of money, I say, twice as much as the return. I'm surely going to say, well, I'll give this guy because he's locally the three percent, but I can get it ten percent elsewhere. How do I count for that eight percent differential?
I understand.
See, that's a, now, if, if this.
There's ways.
There are ways of doing it. Now, if you want to carve it out, say, ten percent of the fund, then somebody has to pay the differential.
That gets built into the assumed rate and the return and the contribution rate and so forth.
The way back, Guam Housing Corporation.
Yes, I remember that.
Remember that, Guam Housing? We did. But then finally, the Guam Housing came back and borrowed money less than what we're charging them.
We had to defeat them.
That's why they went to Citibank and because we lent them, I think it was seven percent, they were able to get it at the bank at four percent. Well, why not? So they went to Citibank and borrowed and paid it off. But we did provide the initial.
Yes.
We give them the starting point. Same thing, other firms on Guam, there are many firms on Guam, but we started off. But once you get started, other firms, other banks comes, hey, wait a minute. That's a good venture, that's a good investment. Because otherwise, why did they retirement guy in the first place? But we took a risk to begin with. That's why we start, we can still do that. We asked SBA people many times, give us an opportunity to participate. But, you know, other banks compete to it. They grab it too.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I'll go ahead and, is the speaker still? Oh, okay. Then I'll just start on that side, since I started on that side.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Speaker San Agustin, I just wanted to first thank you for all of your hard work on the fund. You know, you've been one of the career champions of our retirement fund. And all of our retirees, a serious debt of gratitude to you for all of your service in making sure that the fund is protected and well-managed and well-maintained. So I just wanted to, for the reference, state that, sir, because my dad's a retiree. My mom is soon going to be a retiree.
She's going to go after you.
And, you know, it's always important that, you know, as much as we think of the retirement fund as a big-picture scenario, it really is personal for so many people here in this room. A lot of our families are retirees, so, you know, it really hits close to home.
Senator, this is your turn now. I'm going to be on the way out. You guys have to stick over.
I understand that, sir.
That's why you have to be still.
And that was the reason why I wanted to really talk about these amendments. I can understand the rolling twelve-month-period amendments, we can be flexible there. For me, one of the key amendments that we're talking about today here is the FINRA and the SEC amendments. And I came from the investment industry. And I was a licensed investment advisor with FINRA. And part of the requirements to getting that license is to not only be tested, but to be audited every year. And one of the big safety nets of that audit is it makes sure that the practices that I'm doing are maintained to that standard, that ethical code. And any small problem that I have, I can immediately lose my license and I'll lose my ability to practice. And so, not only was getting the FINRA license a pre-qualifier for me to be able to go out there and say, I'm an investment advisor, but it also gave that seal of approval that I'm an audited advisor and somebody's looking at all of my work and making sure that my work is being held to a certain standard. And so, when I was going through this bill on the floor, and with the courtesy of the chairman, it really jumped out at me that we did not have that as a hurdle to becoming a manager of the fund. And so, that was the reason why I proffered the amendment because, you know, when you just look at the FINRA background, they have, in two thousand and twelve, they had one thousand five hundred and forty-one disciplinary actions that they took against people who were licensed under them when they went in there and they audited them. And they said, you're not doing your job right. Bam. You know, they took disciplinary action. They levied more than sixty-eight million dollars in fines to everybody who had that license. And so, you know, there's all these judgments, all these regulations. There's a third-party regulatory body that's looking at the work and saying, is what you advise for the client suitable for their objectives? Now, when I didn't see that here in any of the laws that we were working with on Bill one seventy, that was the reason why I proffered the amendment. And so, I wanted to ask a couple of questions. My first question is, who is, of these managers that you're recommending, who is monitoring them? Because, you know, I'll throw out a very popular name in the last couple of years who was managing fourteen billion dollars. And that guy's name was Bernie Madoff. And he wasn't FINRA-licensed. And he had Form ADV Part One and Part Two. And he was managing billions, not one point five, that we had fourteen billion. But there was no one guarding the hen house. And so, how are you, are you auditing all of these managers? Are you going in there and determining whether or not what they're doing meets certain suitability requirements? And my other question is, how many fines have you guys levied on managers? How much in millions have you recovered from managers who mismanaged? Because certainly, there had to be managers that didn't do their job properly.
Thank you for the question. I used to work for Goldman Sachs and I was licensed in the beginning of my career. So I know exactly what you're talking about. And I actually changed jobs because there was a lot of inherent conflict interest in my old job. When you are, on the one hand, anyway, I think I explained the inherent conflict interest in my earlier statement. Now, FINRA is a self-regulating entity that only regulates security broker dealers or investment advisors that actually sell securities. It does not regulate the buy-side. So there's the sell-side and the buy-side. The investment managers are on the buy-side. They do not try, they do not buy securities directly. They buy securities through a broker dealer. They will be sending their trades through a broker dealer to buy the security. Now, the investment managers are regulated by the SEC. So are we, are we. And the SEC does annual audit and they also do random audits. They will show up in the office and subpoena all the different records. And they would, they also have regulatory sanction. They also do fines. You probably can pull up the SEC fines as well to see how much fines they have done. And the SEC is a government agency that also regulates FINRA. FINRA is under SEC regulation. And FINRA is not a government agency. It is a self, it is a membership-based, industry self-regulatory organization, just like the CFA Institute I belong to. So there's different regulatory entities in the investment management industry. And because of the unbundling of the services to the different, in the different parts of the financial markets, the SEC is eventually, is the ultimate regulator in this industry. Now, speaking of the role of us, we do manage researches, both on the investment side as well as on the operational side, with regard to Bernie Madoff. Bernie Madoff was a fraud case. And you could do all the due diligence you want. And if somebody wants to defraud you, especially in the case of Bernie Madoff, he used to run NASDA and he used to run FINRA. FINRA, NASDA is FINRA's predecessor. He used to run that organization. So if somebody has that kind of a, you know, we can have locks in our houses. If somebody wants to break that lock, they find a way to do it. So there are definitely bad apples out there. And our firm have never invested with Bernie Madoff because we couldn't understand why there is such a sustainable manager that could generate return month after month and month after month and nobody else can copy it. That is just too good to be true because there are so many talents in this industry. How can somebody be like that? And nobody can copy their strategy. That was the reason, not because we think it was a fraud, just because we couldn't understand why somebody, you know, he would explain to you a strategy he was doing, then you would try to replicate that strategy, you could never replicate it. So if you do not understand it, we do not invest in that. I think sometimes it's common sense that if it's too good to be true, it probably is too good to be true. That probably protected us. But we're not a regulator, we do not find managers. If we find a manager that's unsuitable for the fund or a manager that actually has not performed its contracted duty, we fire the manager, we walk. Because the manager does not hold the assets. The manager cannot walk with our assets. And another thing with Bernie Madoff is that he does not use a custodian. He's self-custodied. All the assets you invest with them, you do not put in Northern Trust. You have to send it, wire it to Bernie Madoff. That's another issue. And that issue actually will not happen for this fund because we have all our assets with Northern Trust. We see it in entire transparency, QCIP by QCIP. I hope that answers your question.
Well, my question was, do you audit the managers? Do you go in there and look at whether or not the advice that they're giving is suitable on a continuous basis, not just with the retirement fund? You know, because the retirement fund might do well with the manager one year, but the next year, the manager might be completely, might have been completely unsuitable.
We hire a manager to fulfill a certain mandate. So as you mentioned, we have fourteen managers. So we divide up the investment universe into large-cap, small-cap, international, emerging market. A manager is hired to fulfill a particular mandate. And we look at their profile every single quarter. So if the managers, because Northern Trust has all the holdings, we get all the holdings, we put the holdings into our system, it runs through. We will see if the manager is fulfilling that mandate. So if a large-cap manager all of a sudden started by international security, that is a breach of contract. So they all have guidelines to provide the guardrail. They have to perform their duty based on that particular mandate.
And, you know, and see, I understand that. And that's why I'm a little confused because that's, you know, when you say that a licensed broker dealer is only regulated to sell securities, that's incorrect, actually. I did exactly what you do.
Did you sell ETFs? Did you sell that?
There was that side of the business, but what I was doing was I was recommending to my clients asset allocations for professional managers. And what my responsibility was, was to make sure that, you know, that allocation was meeting the objective. But what FINRA did was they made sure, they were a third-party that looked at my work. And they made sure that my work was suitable for my client. And the reason why the self-regulatory aspect of it was so effective was because those are professionals looking at professionals and saying, we know what's suitable for that kind of a client, why are you recommending that? And so, in respect to what you do for the fund, who regulates you?
SEC, the SEC. We are registered with the SEC.
The same, okay, so the SEC regulates you guys?
Yes, and also the money managers.
So do you think then that if we do do this amendment, perhaps we can step back from the FINRA requirement? But perhaps we should maintain the SEC requirement?
The SEC is already there. We already have, it's a duplication of what the.
No, but what I'm reading here is that it's saying that it's a duplication.
If I may interject, you don't see the word SEC in the current statute. It's subsumed in eighty-one forty-five C four. It says, such person, firm or corporation is registered as an investment advisor under the laws of the United States as from time to time effect. And the laws are going to be, for example, the Securities and Exchange Act of nineteen thirty-three, the Securities and Exchange Act of nineteen thirty-four, and the Investment Advisors Act of nineteen forty. And those are the general laws that you are probably subject to. And that will automatically be in effect for whatever position the contractor happens to have, whatever they are required to be licensed for in their various capacities.
But how often does the fund check how they're doing with SEC?
Three, first, on, at the proposal stage, because they have to make a certification, then two, at the contract stage, and then periodically through the monitoring.
No, for them.
Our firm, our firm.
Well, I'll tell you where it comes up because they're going to, remember I said the actuary has assumed a return? And when they look back at actual performance over the long period versus that return, there's going to be a flag if the asset allocation or something else or the performance of the managers at, you know, at each level, something's going to contribute to actual performance. So at that stage, that's when the Board of Trustees is monitoring the asset allocation and performance of the managers.
Yes, so the ADV, the ADV Part Two is the disclosure documents all the money managers have to submit to the SEC at least once a year. And if anything happens that hasn't, within a year, they will also are required to file such a disclosure. And this disclosure is being sent to us as well. So we actually have people go through all these filings to make sure we understand if anything has happened with the manager. We actually keep a log. We have a database that keeps all these historical ADVs and we keep a log as to the material changes that had happened with the managers.
And the fund, the board itself also monitors.
The board, yes, the board has.
The financial manager, the financial advisor.
Exactly.
And compares it against the, what the objective is in terms of the rate of return.
Yes.
And that, what the board meets, once a month plus quarterly reviews of the performance.
Quarterly reviews, yes.
Yes, and I think there's a concept of suitability.
Yes, and I think there's a concept of suitability that you raised a number of times. And I think at, at this level, the suitability is less on the individual asset or, for example, Apple stock, but more on the suitability of the classes of where there's large cap growth, large cap, whatever. So it's, it's at a little bit higher level than the individual asset. So the monitoring is going to be done at a higher level for suitability. And, and the board also has a due diligence schedule. At least once a year, these managers need to come to Guam and present to the board and report to the activities and material changes of organization, anything that needs to be disclosed, they will disclose.
Yeah, there's a due diligence, what's it, next week? Paula, next week? We got next week, by the end of the month in February, where the investment managers come to Guam and also for the direct contribution, next week as a matter of fact.
Yes, I think so.
Yeah. So you folks are welcome to join us. Doris Brooks, the O P S is always there, all the time.
And you provide free lunch?
Of course we provide, a lot, compliments at the time. But we do have this income, these investment managers come to Guam.
Yes.
And they make their presentations and they're, they're very severely reviewed by our investment consultant. Pastor Johan always go after them too, if there's anything. And we also have one, a Bernstein firm in San Diego who look at all these transactions and they'll bring up the court. So there's, there's adequate, we have these people that go after them and sue them, go to court. We went after Lehman Brothers, went after...
Bank of America.
Yeah, Countrywide, yes.
Countrywide.
Yeah, we have done that. We have. I can share you the results of that thing.
Yes.
But we do, we just, we have, and we have all these people on tap to watch in addition to them coming. Plus the fact that trustees attend all these, a lot of these investment fund conferences where they meet all the people. You're welcome. As a matter of fact, the one in January, they always have in the Philippines where all the retirement of the, of the areas, they meet in the Philippines.
Oh, no, I can't go to that one.
Yeah, you know, you do that. So there, there's transparency. Anytime you can provide any one of the members of the court, I just passed out a chart right there.
I won't make that available.
And we'll make that available.
Senator Speaker, Senator, Senator Morrison? If no further questions or comments, thank you very much, Sajid Smasi, for your presentation this afternoon. We're now going to proceed with the other items on the agenda. There's actually three different proposals before the committee here that it's on the agenda. Bill number two eighteen, bill number two twenty-five and bill number two twenty-six. All the bills deal with a method of providing financial resources for the construction of a new Simon Sanchez High School. We want to thank the students for their presence this afternoon. I have signed up to testify, Ms. Telling Titanu from the Guam Department of Education. I'm going to, before we, I'm going to allow then, people who are testifying to testify on all three bills if they wish to do so, since they all deal with the same subject matter. Just please make sure that when you're making comments specific to a bill, make sure that it's easy to identify to that bill itself and not to the other bills so that we're able to keep the comments straight. So I have Ms. Telling Titanu. I also have Mr. The President, University of Guam, Dr. Robert Underwood. Signed up. I also have Mr. Merlay, who are you going to testify as well? Oh, you're going to support it. Dr. Cruz, the Chairman of the Guam Education Board. And of course, as, as our normal practice here, we're going to allow the authors of the bill to give us a short synopsis of the bill. Since Senator and Speaker Judy Wampat has two bills, I'm going to recognize her first, Senator McCready, and then we'll go with you in terms of giving us a short synopsis of, of the intention behind the bills that you're proposing. Speaker Wampat?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, the bill two-two-five and two-two-six, I'll just briefly talk about them because they kind of dovetail each other and it's a very comprehensive bill. And the legislative intent, at least with two-two-five, is the, the fact that, you know, Simon Sanchez, of course, has been experiencing some problems, both interior and exterior problems of an antiquated building. And it does not have a sports athletic facility such as baseball and football. The funding source that we're, we're looking at with this bill is that it's going to amend an existing public law, thirty-two thousand zero-six, raising the territorial education facilities cap then from seven million to eight point five million. And that was the basis of testimony provided by the Director of Revenue and Taxation. At the time when that bill was, was written and was on the floor, it didn't have a cap and one of our members then through an amendment actually placed a cap of seven million. What we've done is that we've raised it to eight point five because the, the estimate that revenue taxes anticipating of collecting is approximately ten million dollars. So by amending thirty-two, public law thirty-two sixty-three, what that also does is that the allocation in which we provided one point seven million dollars to pay for the mortgage for Okadu High School would not come anymore then from TAF because of the previous legislation that actually the money should come from section thirty and which the Bank of Guam is a trustee of the section thirty funds. So that then will go automatically then from, from Okadu now to Simon Sanchez High School. It would also set aside one point two million dollars to assist in the rehabilitation of all schools. This is the remaining thirty-six schools in, in the bill. And so the available, total available source for debt service would be approximately five million dollars. The result, of course, of this legislation is to renovate and/or depending, and we're not making that decision for the department based on, not just themselves, but experts who would do this assessment, would be to renovate or construct a new Simon Sanchez High School. There are technical amendments, of course, that I'd like to have changed primarily because fifty-eight C and chapter, and chapter fifty-eight D, because fifty-eight C right now is actually addressing the school security camera system for the Department of Education. There's also, and I'm sure that the President of the University of Guam will provide testimony and this is an increase of the amount of one million dollars to one point two million dollars to assist the University of Guam for the construction and expanded student services center and the construction of a new engineering annex. They have good news that USDA, I mean USDA has informed UOG and the Endowment Foundation that the cost of financing a loan agreement, of course, under that lease, I mean, it may sound like it's not good news because of the one point two, but there have been some changes, of course, in the current rate based on the interest environment. The other amendment will be again recommended by the Superintendent, which is to include a system-wide master plan. And I know my colleague Senator Yamashita had championed that for prioritizing future capital improvements to all GDOE schools. And the plan will take into consideration the population and enrollment patterns, curriculum and physical condition of each school. And the plan will be financed, the, the plan rather, will be financed by the awardee of the contractor. Bill two-two-five, this one feeds into the other, again, the same intent for all schools. And, and what this is, is that we're going to be reprogramming now originally for the master plan from two-two-five, I mean, two-two-six to two-two-five, because we want to build it in the, in the bonds. Will be the same thing, amending again, mentioning the cap increase and reserving one point two million for payment of the remaining additional thirty, for the additional thirty-six public schools. We'll be using, in this case now, it's a, a, a concept, of course, that, you know, that is being used here, is the matured twenty thirteen C business privilege stacks as source of payment. But this is a bridge. It's not using that money for thirty years. It's just a bridge for twenty, for two years, which is twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen. Because if you look at the BBT bonds, is that traditionally, if you look at it, it will not be available. The money will not be available until twenty nineteen. However, what you can do is you capitalize the interest and then you might be able to, to get, to bring the date down, but it won't be until twenty seventeen. So by, by that, just based on the dates, makes it impossible basically to, to move forward in the construction. TFF funds will be available and I understand that the Department of Revenue Tax already has put out an RFP to be able to do the triennial. And hopefully by the end of the year, once that is in place, then the government will start collecting money, so go into the TFF. So that's a lot of information. But the other overall then is that when you look at it, eight point five million will be the new adjustment. One point two for UOG. GCC will maintain the amount that they need for their debt service. The public libraries also included Simon Sanchez as well with the amount of money. Now depending if that goes up from eight point five up to ten million, it automatically through a formula, Sanchez will get more money because eighty percent of that balance then of the formula will go to Simon Sanchez, seven percent to the early childhood program and even three percent for bus stops and, and so on. So thank you very much. I'm sorry. I was going as fast as I could because I know we have another member to explain another bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Speaker Wampat. Senator McCready on bill number two-one-eight.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to speak this afternoon. You know, I guess one thing to simplify everything is now the legislature is competing to build you guys a new school. So that's a good thing. Thank you for being here. Yeah. And I, I thank you guys for being here, you know. I want to thank my co-sponsors for, for, for taking this time to be on the bill. Senator Morrison, Senator Rodriguez, Senator Limtiaco, Senator Ugin, Senator Roger Spicione, Senator Chris DeWanis. Now, the bill that I propose, or we propose, sets aside approximately four point eight million dollars of maturity bonds that you heard earlier. That matures in two thousand and eighteen and it is solely for the rebuilding of Simon Sanchez High School. I do agree that we need to look at the deferred maintenance of all the schools and take care of the bigger problem. But right now, and this bill is addressed for Simon Sanchez High School. Twenty years ago would have been a good time to build this school and the second best time to build it is now. Now, bill two-eighteen's intent is to be proactive and forward-thinking by reserving these funds to work in concert with all other efforts to repair and renovate this school. You know, I've hear it many, many times, that Guam's number one asset is our tourism. But our strongest asset are you, the students and the teachers. You guys are the future of our existence. So when they say tourism, I won't argue with that. That's a billion-dollar industry. But our future depends upon you guys, excuse me. And it's our responsibility to find you guys the infrastructure to learn and to get educated. That's our jobs and that's why we are here today. I look forward to working with my colleagues to make sure this becomes a reality. I'm, I know you're tired of hearing sound and it's time to hear some substance. And that's what I think that, that I'm hearing today. We, I mean, I've never seen it before, that we're competing to build a new school for you guys and to, and to find the solutions. And it's not because we did anything, it's because you guys did it. You guys brought it to our attention. You guys are here. So I thank you guys. I thank the Chairman for, for having the foresight and, 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 and the knowledge to have this public hearing because without Speaker Pangolin, there's no public hearing. We can't hear your voices. So I thank him very much and I thank the co-sponsors. And I'm looking for a new Simon Sanchez High School and the deferred maintenance of all schools, public schools on Guam to happen really soon. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And since we're competing, I'll just tell you, I was the first one to compete because a week ago we had a hearing on a bill to provide three million dollars tomorrow for Simon Sanchez. Ms. Titanu?
Madam Speaker, Mr. Chairman, Senators. My name is Telling Titano. I'm the Deputy Superintendent of Finance and Administrative Services and this week I'm the Acting Superintendent of Education. Thank you for this opportunity to provide testimony on three pieces of legislation before the committee today. Bill two-one-eight thirty-two identifies four point eight million to complete the replacement and construction of a new Simon Sanchez High School, the funding of which will be realized during fiscal year two thousand and nineteen. Bill two-two-five thirty-two sets aside an annual stream of one point seven million in funding from anticipated additional property tax revenue to be used for the reconstruction and renovation of Simon Sanchez High School and other educational needs. It also identifies up to an additional three point three million annually for these purposes. Bill two-two-six thirty-two sets aside funding from an expiring bond in FY twenty nineteen to be used for the renovation of our other schools. And with that legislation, an additional appropriation is made for the development of a master facilities plan. We are aware that there is an existing law, public law thirty-one two-two-nine, that already authorizes the government to issue one hundred million in bonds to fund renovations to our public schools and also, also authorizes the development of a comprehensive master facilities plan. We have been working with Adaloupe and the legislature to determine whether the existing law is an effective way to move forward to improve our schools. Clearly, a major factor here would be the ability for the government to move forward with the proposed borrowing, given the existing debt ceiling and other competing priorities and considerations. We are clearly interested in the bills being considered today because of the alternative mechanisms they provide for funding our facility needs. The bills clearly identify and set aside revenue streams which can be leveraged over time to make a significant impact on our school system, beginning with Simon Sanchez High School. We know that Simon Sanchez High School is in need of major work in order to address the age conditions of the facility, but also to address the future needs of an increasingly populated northern region. The students and teachers of Simon Sanchez have made the issues well-known and we believe it is time to take action with regard to the long-term solutions for the school to include the often overlooked need for improved athletic facilities. We agree with the need for a comprehensive master's facilities plan. The last one was completed in nineteen ninety-nine and since then, the department has not maintained an internal planning division that would have been critical for an update. We have been able to generate two important facility assessments in the recent years, beginning with the SEDEXO F cap report in two thousand and ten and the recent Army Corps Engineers Report commissioned by the Office of Insular Affairs. The SEDEXO F cap report identified one hundred and forty million and the Army Corps report identified ninety million in deferred maintenance costs at our schools. Through the Adequate Education Act trust fund, over fifty million in facility improvements have already been made throughout GDOE. Although, although bill two-two-six appropriated five hundred thousand for a new master facilities plan, we would like to suggest amending bill number two-two-five instead to allow the funding of a master's facilities plan as part of the initial effort to address Simon Sanchez High. We believe that with the accelerated funding, the planning effort would generate a preliminary report as soon as September of this year, if we move quickly. This would enable us to address the immediate needs of Simon Sanchez while also addressing and prioritizing the needs of all our remaining public schools on island so that we are ready to move forward when the funds from bill two-two-six are available. The master plan is going to be a critical document for a number of reasons. We hope that it will address the important data points that are most relevant to planning the future. Demographics, enrollment, current facility capacity, current attendance areas, housing developments, population trends and relevant policies for maintaining healthy, safe and secure schools. We also, however, want to ensure that such planning takes into consideration the need to provide schools that are equipped for students of this century. Schools that are wired for technology, structured for better collaboration and are sustainable and efficient. We want a roadmap for the future, not just one that repairs schools, but prepares schools to serve our students of today and tomorrow. We at the Guam Department of Education are no experts in the financing and construction of school facilities. We work hard to find resources to provide for the maintenance of existing schools, but ultimately we know that our schools need much more work than we can provide with our current budget. What we want to do is make clear that our students, teachers and staff deserve school environments that are conducive to teaching and learning. And we ask that the Governor and the legislature work with us to determine how we can meet this goal and take our school system forward. Thank you for considering, considering our requests and support for this legislation at hand and thank you for this opportunity to submit testimony.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Dr. Underwood?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the committee, and distinguished senators. I'm trying to tax my brain as much as possible to see if I could find any kind of rhetorical flourish to arouse a cheer for a facilities master plan, but I don't think I can. I can't say, you know, rebuilding master plan, or I can't say, uh, do anything of that nature, which will generate a whole lot of excitement. But I am here to, uh, simply, as Speaker Wampad has indicated in her Bill two twenty-five, which does mention the University of Guam, and which I'm assuming that no one has any particular issue with earmarking those funds for the university. This has been the, the, the one major project that the university has sought, uh, external funding for, has been the Student Services Center. In an ironic way, assuming that this bill goes forward, this particular group of students at Simon Sanchez, uh, this particular group of sharks are more likely to benefit from actually benefiting from the Student Services Center at the university than they are from rebuilding a campus where they're at today. And that's the general flow of the process. And I'm happy to say that Sanchez has the highest percentage of graduates who go on to the University of Guam. So, as these sharks become Tritons in the future, basically, we have in the bill, coming out of the, uh, the TEFF Fund, the Education, uh, the Education Facilities Fund. Originally, uh, we had a bill that was going to fund it out of the liquid fuels tax that didn't, uh, come through. Then we had a, an impediment with the, uh, the debt ceiling, so we had to adopt a different strategy, where we brought in the University of Guam Foundation. And in that whole process, which has been about a three-year saga, uh, the USDA, uh, actually raised their rates in October. So, we had anticipated three point five percent, and now it's moved over to four point five percent. Uh, the, uh, the better news, that's not good news, but the good news is that USDA in Hawaii has approved the loan package, and we are anticipating approval by the end of this month, which would lock in this rate, or a lower rate, whichever, you know. So, then, once we lock in this agreement in this month, if there's a lower rate in the future, uh, we don't, we don't know whether there'll be a lower rate, but we'll be able to take advantage of that. But if there's a higher rate in the future, we'll keep it where it is today, which is actually at four point three eight percent. So, the, uh, the offered amendment is to just add exactly one hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars to the million dollars that's identified in the bill. And that's basically it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Well, what's the total amount of loan package?
Uh, one point one seven nine.
Oh, no, 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 the one that you just got approval for.
Oh, it's, uh, twenty, twenty-one point seven.
Okay. Dr. Cruz, were you going to provide just one?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, members of the legislature. I'm, I'm very impressed that, you know, there is, uh, we're only losing three senators, or it would actually make this be unanimous. So, it really is very, uh, I'm, I'm very, um, what do you call that, uh, very appreciative. And I think even in the earlier presentation, we actually could have learned just a little bit more with our community, really, that additional, uh, uh, support that really were financed and can really be, be gotten, because we were talking about really doing it through, creatively, through the American way, which is really we borrow and then we pay back. And I think right now, what, what this bill has provided is really not only borrowing, but actually having, uh, the ability to pay it back. So, in that regard, I really applaud you, Senator, uh, Senator Nicholas and Senator McCready, and, you know, Speaker Wampad. Uh, I just want to say that, you know, Speaker Wampad, you spoke of really what we call, you know, your findings, and I find your findings almost, you know, worthy really of a testimony that should be presented, so that all of us can read it too, as opposed to waiting until really the report comes out. I, I stand actually in support of, um, the bill, but more specifically on, uh, Bill two two six. If you look at two two six, it looks as if it actually is a beginning of a comprehensive master plan for financing. And I think, you know, with, with the elements that are presented there, I'm reminded really of a student, um, whom I tutored for, on, on a, on a thesis, about really the schools of Guam, or how schools really should be built in Guam. And I'm very happy that I see the notion about equipment and the notion about, uh, about space. Space for the, for the BMI, I know, for the activity of our students is really dwindling in all of our schools. Never mind that, you know, that, that the, that the, that the buildings are dilapidated, or really bordering on really actually, you know, being, being really locked up. Uh, I say that maybe, you know, what we can do is I, as a board member, I'm really pushing that we have more active participation with GPD, GEPA, and public health, because they are really, they are really the guardians that help us in providing adequate education. I want to remind the senators that, you know, just before the school opens, we have what we call a school readiness. And I think the school readiness, according to the Adequate, Adequate Education Act, is really very laudable as a general plan that we can actually look at. It really addresses not only the funding for, uh, uh, the personnel, but actually even for operational issues, okay? Uh, and even for, in regard to the libraries, we have monies that actually are supposedly based on, I guess, the number of people who, who pick up, uh, who pick up passports, you know, that money is supposed to be devoted. Uh, I'm, I'm still searching, you know, that, that, that money be reported out to the Department of Education, or at least to the board. Uh, and, and basically too, I, I find the, in two two six, I'm, I have to say that, you know, Speaker Wampad, Senator Yama Shida, and Senator Barnes, that actually is a very good, uh, starting point of really all of the elements that really need to be, to be included, huh? And the elements are, some of them, I, I almost think that is really is an afterthought, and most law and most financing, you know, by the time you, you, you like, like, by the time you buy shoes for your children, they've already outgrown it. And by the time we, we, we build our, our schools, we're even finding that we're even way behind in, in light of technology. And that is the biggest challenge that we have. Okay? So, we may, when we really look at adequate facilities, we have to really include really what we call, uh, what we call hardware, okay? Where the others are really software. In the computer world, it's really hardware that we really have to really think about. And the hardware to change, okay? I remember in mind, you know, that I'm actually trying to change it. So, the, 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 the other caution or complications that I see is really what we call the collaboration, cooperation, and, and, you know, uh, for the repair, renovation, and replacement, okay? Replacement is a big item. And replacement, like I said, is really not only for the, for the facilities, but actually for the equipment that comes with it, which is nearing really what I call, uh, almost like an appendage that really cannot be looked at, okay? Uh, the repair has, has been almost mitigated a little bit by our grants, but we're finding that even with that, you know, our problems at Simon Sanchez was, I'm sorry, the experts really did not even, you know, uh, find that, you know, that, that little construction that was done of the, of the duck, you know, was not really, uh, seen as a, as a major problem. So, we did the Ara grant without that actually being looked into. So, there are, uh, I, I, I wish that, you know, or I hope that we don't mind always opening up and really repairing, because there are things that are really outside of our purview, if not outside of our knowledge, and part of it is really our own, uh, our own, uh, focus and experience. And when we, in, in education, I'm telling you, at least in, in, in the, in the policy area, we really are lacking, you know, some continuity, major continuity. I, I have to say that I'm probably a, a member of the board that actually has outlasted anybody. I'm, I'm shooting really for thirteen years, because by then, I would have had the whole year of, of service, really, of the students from, from, from kindergarten, kindergarten, all the way up to, to, uh, what do you call that, post-high school, and even thinking, I don't know, let's really add two more years, because especially kids really are given additional years really to graduate. So, that, that, and that is not only a challenge for you, but it's a challenge of our community to really look at education as really the, the most important agency, if not really the most important service that we give to our people. And in giving to our people, they actually give it in return by means of really an investment that they put in. So, the collaboration, the cooperation is really something that I hope we can, we can, I don't know whether we can mandate that, that, you know, GIDA, um, what do you call that, um, GIDA, you know, the, the people that are mentioned here, you know, uh, GIDA and, and Reverend Tax, whether they can really, you know, work together. And I think maybe now's the time for us to really wake up and say, look, GIDA and, 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 um, and what do you, Reverend Taxation, please look at this. As, as, as two different roles that really have got to be somehow interlinked, so that it'd be, you know, we, we, we build a stronger island and a stronger financial system, really framework, really for, for the next century. And I think, you know, if we, if I said, I'm going to say, you know, that, that we would attribute it to this, uh, this, this year of, of the legislation, that really would be, it really would come down as a legacy that I would even note in, in, in the little notes that I write in regard to that. So, with that as a, as a, as a, as a comment, I'm wondering really whether, where the cost of five hundred million, five hundred thousand dollars really came from. I'm always a, a leery of a number that's really proposed without some justification or some rationale. And I don't, and especially because I hear that, you know, whatever's left over should be given really to what we call, uh, it's almost like an afterthought. So, let's, let's do a plan that is really going to say, we're going to hold ourselves accountable, and then change it, amend it, okay, remediate it, replace it. But if we don't do that, then I say that, you know, this bill, this bill is really, uh, we can say is really a work in progress. We may have to revisit it and put a, put a, uh, a sunset provision that in two years it really would be seriously, you know, looked at. And in two years, it's got to be looked at with some funding source, because we are, we don't have the capability really. And it's really the whole community that's going to be benefiting, so I think tax pay is money really would be very laudable really to, 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 to address or to really to include in that. With that comment, I, 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 I would be giving you a more, um, written one, because I'm still putting in some thoughts, but in some, the five hundred thousand dollars really has got to be a bit more planned, okay? The other areas for, for facilities, I've got to really incorporate really what we call the, the, the facilities that are no longer, um, really something that's really just an afterthought in regard to, uh, uh, what do you call that, in regard to a computer. But it really is, should be part of that, because right now, we, we have a problem that, you know, we don't, we don't even have, know whether we have enough, uh, you know, plugs to really plug in our computers. And we're planning on giving, giving computers to the students, never mind that really don't have a storage room to store not only the, the computers that we're going to give out to the students, but actually the, what do you call that, that moving, the moving, uh, board that really the teacher should be using. And never mind that the boards have got to be replaced, because we, we're hoping that every room would really have really what we call a, a, what do you call that, Dr. Yama Shida, that, yeah, the, 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 the board, you know, that, that can be used, and everybody then can see it, and I can say, Jose, no, you're not paying attention. What was in that last slide? So, then, I mean, you know, get, let them come alive, and if not, really engage. So, again, thank you. Uh, it's a bit general, but at the same time, I think there's substantial information that I'd like you to, to consider, and all of you who are here present. I would, I would say, Sis, this must be, and, 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 not only for our students who are here present, and I do love them, okay? I do love them, and I, I give you my biggest appraisals really, Simon Sanchez, and thank you really for taking education just a bit more, which is really for action. Sis, this must be, Sis, this must be, thank you very much.
Thank you, and Sis, this must be, Dr. Cruz. Um, Speaker Wampad, did you have any questions or additional comments?
Uh, no, I don't have. Uh, I don't have any question, but I think there's one thing that's also really very important, because we have learned from the past, uh, when, you know, I had introduced the bill for JFK, and there was, of course, a competing bill, and the vice speaker and I worked together to combine that, because the vice speaker wanted it to, to be done within nine months. However, as you know, that didn't happen. And so, we've learned from the past, and we took a testimony from the Attorney General. And if you look, of course, in the bill on page nine, is that this time we want to be able to protect the government from any of these, uh, construction contracts, and not limited to warranties, liquidated damages, performance and payment bonds, indemnity, insurance standard specification, technical specification, progress schedule, maintenance, compliance of Guam regulatory, um, regulations, prevailing wages, and of course, any other restrictions in compliance with that particular law. So, uh, we've come a long ways, uh, and, and that was actually the very first time in which that bill, actually, when the government had money available, based again on a maturity of the section thirty bonds, uh, that we were able then to use it. Because as you know, for those of you who don't know, most of our schools, of course, were built, yes, by that time by federal dollars. And it, the very first local monies to be used to build a school was Southern High School, and then Timuning Elementary School. The other four schools that you guys are, know of, the new schools, those are all compact impact monies, federal dollars. So, local funds are just not readily available to be able to do this. And that's why, uh, through the efforts of Speaker Pangolinan, by actually earmarking the Territorial Education Facilities Fund, that that's earmarked now to go always for education. So, naturally, the more monies that the government can collect in real estate property taxes, then the more monies will be available then, of course, for the needs of our schools. So, therefore, that's why now with the, uh, the, um, the funding to do the triennial, uh, then hopefully then, uh, we would get upwards to ten million dollars to make more monies available for GDOE, not just for Simon Sanchez, not just for, uh, our thirty-three, uh, thirty-six schools, to help GCC, UOG as an educational institution, and then possibly even more for operations of DOE. So, thank you very much for, uh, your testimony.
Thank you very much, Speaker Wampad. Senator McCready?
I just had one question, uh, for the panel, whoever can answer it. Knowing that what we know today about, about the trials and tribulations that we've gone through building new schools, good and bad, uh, the process, when you talk about planning, how long will it take us to, to, to plan a school, uh, with all that we know, with no problems, from start to finish, turn dirt, and have a brand-new school? How long would that take? Does anyone know?
Um, generally, what you would probably need to do is hire an, an A and E firm, unless you do a design build. Um, and so, it would take some time to develop, uh, the IFB or the RFP for that. So, my, my sense is that would take maybe three months.
So, roughly, three months would be a...
Three to six months, it depends on, yeah.
Three to six months. And then you would turn, you, you would get a, a drawing, basically, of what you wanted.
Right, and then, um, he'd probably want at least a month for the document to be out for, uh, different contractors to bid on it.
And then, okay, so that would be the RFP process. That would take another three or, three or six months. So, so roughly, I mean, you would...
Typically, though, the, the design by the architect to include construction documents will take at least six months.
At least six months.
At least six months.
So, it's safe to say, uh, good planning to build a school, take about a year just to turn dirt.
Pretty close.
Not a problem, it's a process, right? Like, that's what, take about, okay.
Thank you. But we do have a law that says just take an old school and site adapt it. And if you do that, then you have your construction documents all set, you have your design documents all set, you site adapt it to the terrain of the property, and that could take, you know, two months, three months.
I think Guam is known for losing its documents. Uh, we have one issue that we're facing, and we don't know who is responsible, but it's something that we share. And as a board member, I'm the one that's saying, you know, we have really provided this thing, but there's some documents that are being, uh, that really has been outside of our responsibility. So, those, those, those documents, I don't know who's, who would be in charge of what we call, uh, you know, references of really government of Guam. There is a law that says, you know, a certain law that says that, you know, the University of Guam is given, I guess, a research institute really to kind of do that, but I think it's never been funded. When I was president, I was always asking, can that be really followed through? Because it really is a, is a very important foundation, especially on the research portion of our responsibility at the University of Guam. So, there is, I don't know whether that law is still there, and so, I don't know whether it's still there, but, you know, it's, it's really something that, you know, can be worth not only for, as our students advance, especially with the, towards a graduate school, you know, it, it really is important. We, that'd be kind of like, you know, boosted up, because it's very important, that we just can't make them, they're just, you know, that, they're looking forward to the future. And so, so that, that, that's very important. Thank you very much.
I'm just going to start coming back this way. Senator Barnes?
Sis, this must be, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank the panel for being here this afternoon. Um, my comments are, um, I guess just based on the chronological history of what's been going on since we... since we've been trying to build schools. And as each year goes by, we're gonna see a continual need, uh, um, for, uh, for new schools, for students. And as we look, uh, Mr. Chair, at chapter fifty-eight of, uh, of, of our, of our Guam code annotated, it'll talk about the history of how the schools were created, where we've done. And today, just based on the collaboration, uh, uh, of the speaker and, and the, uh, of her co-chair, Senator Yamashita, and just everybody in the room, I think that if we look at providing and giving to all the programs needed, then we, then we at least spread the ability for our community to continue, uh, to be given the needs from the policymaking body. And as we look, I know that the speaker spent a lot of time, uh, at looking at the need. I know that the president of UOG is here and saying, if we get this additional funding, then we will be able to build the new school. And then in turn, our students will continue to benefit after they graduate from the high school. And we know how important Simon Sanchez is needed. We looked at JFK, we looked at all the schools that were built up in the north and there's, today we're talking about the, the central high schools and, and needing more there, and then even the elementary schools. And it's not gonna stop as we continue to grow Guam. And I'm just saying that, um, Mr. Chair, the, the, the bills set in place, the collaboration could be instilled. Every program that was listed by the speaker is very valuable and critical to moving, to moving the needs of the students forward. And I think that this is, I, I, I think for the students here, it's a big education to know that we're not just gonna build a new Simon Sanchez, but we're also gonna give all the needed, uh, uh, educational facilities for, for the stu-, the, for the new students coming in. Because this continues to be a growing population for Guam. And Mr. Chair, with, with your efforts and moving forward and us sustaining the, 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 the resources that's needed to pay back for building these facilities and working the maintenance and working the plan like DOE stated, I think that, uh, th- these, these bills are critical. And I, I, the bill two-two-five and two-two-six, as recommended, is very important and crucial for working it. And I also applaud the efforts for two-one-eight for at least attempting to try and, and work the financials needed. But I'd like to support, uh, giving to every, every critical need that was mentioned here today. Um, to, to rebuild, uh, Simon Sanchez, but to also help UOG, GCC, Public Life Rises, Early Child Education, Revenant Tax. So I'm just saying that it's important.
Thank you very much. Since I see the tone of the comments here, uh, I have some students who wanna testify. And I'm gonna ask that the panel be dismissed here, uh, that the education officials remain, uh, to hear the students. We'll go and hear from the students, then we'll come back and ask any members of the panel here to have any... Yes, so, and so, so we're asking you to stay 'cause the panels may have questions to you, but I'd like to give the students an opportunity to speak. And so, um... I have Mr. Derek Evangelista signed up. Ms. Mario Villaluce. Aris, is this Arissa Delos Santos? Mr. Tyler Flores? I'm sorry. Oh, my apologies. So that gives us our four-member panel. We'll go ahead and begin. Please identify yourself for the record. Make sure you press the button so that it's on in red and then you may begin. No, you don't, as long as the light's on.
Uh, hi, my name is Derek Evangelista. Um, many teachers have worked at Simon Sanchez for a long time and, uh, they, they would say like, they never see no change around Sanchez. There was many problems at Sanchez until we challenged our elected leaders and senators and, which was the walking issues of a sho-, uh, of a short challenge. Uh, they saw the problems, we, we wanted a new school, but we got our school improved. Over one week, we, we, we were, we took a break from school. Um, yes, the school was improved and many of the fixes, it seemed like everything was, was nice. But I'm thinking like months, the, the Band-Aid fixes will eventually show again. You, then, when that happens, you will have to spend more money again to fix something that could have been done twenty years ago. And ever since we got our school improved and we made noise, we took ownership in, in our school by picking up trash and, uh, we cleaned the, the bathroom every period. We don't get any extra credit or we're not graded on it. We weren't forced to do it, but we decided to do it as a group to show that we really do wanna new school.
Thank you very much, Sisus Masia, sir.
Hello, my name is Mari, Mario Villaluce. So far with believing my students have been doing, we've actually thought of this project called Project Inspired, where we as seniors, since we're leaving all mark, we are going to inspire the underclassmen, the ninth and tenth graders to keep our school clean as we, as we, um, a few, you mentioned months ago that it's also the student's responsibility to have pride and take care of their school while this is it. We've actually, we've gone to classrooms for freshmen and for sophomores and we tell them how important it is, like, not only for us, but, you know, for visitors who come in and see, um, to see how our school looks. And it's, when I was a freshman, I didn't really pay attention to how the structure of the school was. I just, I went in and, okay, this is my school. You know, I, I didn't really care, but now that I'm a senior, I can see that there, there's so many problems that I could have helped on. And, you know, I think the reason why our school was like this is because the students, they, no one ever, like, talked to them, no one would ever communicate with them and tell them, hey, you know, you have to take care of your school, you know, this is your home. But now that I'm a senior, it only feels like home because only now am I realizing that I'm leaving and I don't wanna look back in high school saying... I don't wanna look back at my school and, and like know that I could have done something. And this is why we're doing this, is because we want the new generation to take pride in their school. And hopefully, like, us and the teachers and the leaders can, you know, somehow get the message through and that we give them hope that they'll be in a classroom where they can actually learn and feel comfortable and, you know, go home to their parents and say, I love school, you know? Like, we, I don't want them to go like home and say, I don't wanna be at school because it feels unsafe, it's dirty, or, you know, I feel like I don't belong. Hopefully, this...
Thank you very much. It's quite loud and clear. Thank you. Ms. Flores?
Um, I'm Tyler Flores and as Derek said, or how he was talking about how the Band-Aid fixes will show later, I believe they will because over time, it's gonna rain hard again. It's, the school's gonna, I forget how I should say. Um...
It's okay, you get your time.
Good morning, um, my name is Darren Menno. Oh, sorry, good afternoon. My name is Darren Menno and, um, I'd just like to say that, uh, as a se-, as seniors, uh, of this LYM project, we understand that we won't be able to, to attend the new Simon Sanchez High School. Uh, we wanna do this for our younger brothers, our younger sisters, our younger cousins, nieces, nephews, et cetera, so that they won't attend the same, uh, school that we're attending. Because later on in the years when they, uh, attend Simon Sanchez High School, I'm pretty sure that it'll be more dilapidated and, like, like Derek said, the Band-Aid fixes will eventually come off. Walking in the hallways of Simon Sanchez High School in the Butler Buildings when it's raining, there are students dodging rain coming from the ceilings of the, the tin that's supposed to be covering us 'cause we don't wanna get wet. There's also an alley there where students have to turn sideways just to get to their classrooms. And, um, yeah, we know we won't be able to attend it, but we're doing this for the upcoming, um, students for, that's gonna be attending Simon Sanchez High School. Um...
Did, did you wanna testify? I'm still listening.
Like, every, oh, I'm sorry. My name's Jesse Bloss, I'm a senior at Simon Sanchez High School. Like, everyone was saying, uh, we're doing this for the future. Um, we're doing this for every single student for futures to come who calls Simon Sanchez High School their home. And we don't want them to deal with what we had to deal with. I don't wanna look maybe five years in the future and my little sister's going to school. And if we have a rainy day, a really bad rainy day, and we know it's gonna come, and imagine her ankle deep in water, suffering the way we did. And I feel, um, as they said before, we're trying our best to keep our school clean and helping it. And we're reaching out to you guys for a problem that we can't fix to help us get a new school for the futures to come. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Jose Canata. And I'd just like to give an example of what Derek was saying. Um, I'd like to, if you can also see my shoes as an example. Uh, every time something goes off with my shoes, I tend to fix it, scrub it down if it's dirty or, or glue it because it's coming out the sides, you know? And it's just like our school. We, we see something's wrong with it, we just fix it up, you know, we just fix it up. And my parents give me money for, to buy new shoes. And I'm guessing the government gives school money to rebuild a new school. And instead of me using the money to buy my shoes, I buy something else. It's almost like something the government has done to pass, you know? Using like something else instead of for the school. So now I think it's time for me to buy new shoes instead of using like something else. And I, and I think, um, the government should do as well. And I thank you guys for competing for our new school.
Thank you very much and we hope... And don't, don't worry, the winners in this competition are gonna be you guys. So I think that's, uh, that's gonna be the best thing about this competition. Ms. Flores, did you wanna continue?
Um, I just wanted to say that I don't want my sister to have to do that, to have to worry about whether she's safe or not at the school. And for all my other siblings or my family members to have to go through that. Because it really is a lot, four years is a lot of having to deal with it.
Thank you very much. And, uh, Arissa, did you? I know we just kinda skipped you.
Uh, my name's Arissa Delos Santos. Um, as everyone said, we kind of have been ignored for the last couple of years. We have been pushed aside and forgotten at some times. And we sat back and waited for someone to do something about it because we thought that we didn't have that sort of power. But our teacher taught us that we, above everyone else, have that power because we know better than everybody else how our school is. And we don't want to sit back anymore because we don't want our siblings to have to suffer the way we did or to have to sit through hot classrooms or get rained on every other day or to have to stand out in the hot sun after school, waiting for the buses or be soaked because there isn't any room to wait for the buses under the awning. And we were just hoping that instead of fixing them as you have the last couple of years, just trying to cover up the damages as the building itself wears away, you could rebuild, not for us because we're not gonna be there, but for our siblings because they deserve it just as much as we do.
Thank you very much, uh, and Sisus Masia. I'm, I'm gonna just give each member of the panel here maybe about a minute or so to kinda give you their sentiments on your testimony and your presentation, uh, you know, so that, uh, you can be assured of, of their attentiveness. And, uh, I'm just gonna start with Senator Yamashita and just quickly work with our way down and then we'll bring the other panel back that had, uh, testified for additional questions by the members of the board.
Uh, thank you very much, Speaker Ben. Uh, we've, we've met a few times already and so you know that I applaud your voice. I hope that as you move on and you graduate, you go into work or you go into college, you go GCC or UOG, that you continue using your voice. Continue because the issues of life are not gonna stop here. So, and as you become parents, make sure that every school is at standard. So continue, you know, s- looking, speaking, and insisting, right? So you're learning a very valuable lesson, as to be engaged. And, and while some would suggest that we're all competing here, um, and Speaker Ben actually said it, yeah, the competition is, is not, it, it's really, everything has been in place, but everything has now come forward and is here. And we've been working on so many measures and, uh, the winner will be you. But the valuable lesson is you need to continue speaking up, going to PTAs, going to meetings, and saying this is what's important. And know that if you don't take care of it, nobody else will. That's what's valuable to start with yourself and with your children and your family. Thank you, Speaker Ben.
Thank you very much. Senator Yada?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, you, you guys are absolutely right, there is absolutely no reason for you guys to be down here, uh, advocating for your school. And that should have been in the leadership. You know, there was no reason for you guys to be out of school for one week because those problems should have been taken care of during the summer. There's absolutely no reason why those issues were not addressed during the summer when we spent millions of dollars on a, on a contractor to tell us what the problems were. There's absolutely no reason. And it took you kids to come down here to tell us exactly what is going on in your own school when we spent millions of dollars on experts, that we so-called experts, to let us know what's going on and they still didn't fix the problem. Hopefully, we'll be get, be able to get down and address the situation. And whether it's a brand-new school or a school that is completely renovated to brand-new standards, one way or the other, hopefully, we can come down to a solution. And thank you, Speaker Ben, for listening to these bills.
Thank you very much. Senator McCreed?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. I just wanna thank you guys all. I've seen you before many times at your school and I just wanna thank you for your core values. Uh, listen, we all want a great education, have families, and hopefully, we have enough for retirement. We touched on all of that today. But I just want you guys to remember that we work for you. That's why we are here, because your parents and your uncles and your aunties put us here because we work for you. So it's our jobs to do that. And I want you guys to always remember this, this is your legacy, not ours. And then what you guys did this year to make us come to the forefront and, and to, to, and I call it competing 'cause we're competing up here to, to try and build you the best school or try and build you the be-, or give you the best solution. You guys are our strongest and your own strongest assets to this island, you're the future. So I just wanna thank you, thank the chairman, thank the speaker and all the sponsors of the bills because I'll promise this one thing, that I will support whatever is best for you and our island's school students. So thank you very much and good luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for your testimony today. Um, I think, uh, um, I speak for everybody in that your message is being heard. And, uh, I will do my part to find a solution for you. And thank you once again for your testimony.
Thank you very much, Senator.
I was a shark for a day. In fact, my, uh, my escort is here today, the one that took me around to the school. And I gotta say, it was extremely challenging. But I gotta say that, uh, as much as I got out of that, being a shark and walking in your shoes for a day, this has been probably one of the most moving experiences that I've had in a, in a long time in terms of youth activism. The panel here before us, each one of you demonstrated and said that this is not for you because you're graduating. And I gotta say, at all your graduations, your valedictorian and your saladictorian have been tremendous despite the challenges that you have. And I'm gonna close with my commitment with the rest of our colleagues to move forward to, to support whatever solution comes about, working with the leadership, uh, in all different branches of government. But what this panel has embodied today, and I wanna leave you with this, is the true embodiment of service above self. You defined that today because you said it time and time again. It's not for you. You're graduating, but you care enough about your siblings and about your underclassmen that you came forward today to insist that a solution come forward. And for that, I will support one thousand percent. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Senator Siniklis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, um, I was actually a teacher at Sanchez for about six months, you know? I didn't just, you know, get to, to have the one-day experience. I actually lived it with you guys for a while. It was, you know, students before your time, but I was there and I saw it. And the school definitely needs attention. Um, I do want to, um, ask you guys though, there's something that I really want to put into your minds. And I want you to take it into your hearts and take it very, very seriously. And that is that it's important that we build your school. It's not something to compete over. It's a responsibility that we need to follow through with. But there's another piece of the puzzle. And that is that building a school can be a very, very expensive thing. And if we spend way too much to do it, what's gonna happen is we're gonna take money away from other schools. And that really concerns me because I know you guys are thinking about your siblings. At my age, I'm thirty-two, not much older than you guys. I have a six-year-old son and he goes to Maria Joa. And when your child is gonna be six years old going there to any other public school that hasn't been rebuilt, it's gonna probably have the same problems as Sanchez today if we overspend today. So I want you guys to understand that we're gonna rebuild your school. We're gonna build you a new one. But I need your help. We all need your help to make sure that we balance out the importance of rebuilding that school with making sure that we don't spend way more than we need to to get it up to a good, a good standard. We'll make it nice, but we gotta make sure we also control how much it costs. Because that way we need to have the money for our kids, your six-year-olds, when they get to be going to their schools as well. Because if we overspend for one school now, it, the way the money works is it's gonna take away the money that we are gonna need for all the other schools on the island. So we're gonna prioritize Sanchez, but we're gonna need your help to make sure that we're gonna be able to meet all the other priorities as well. So I just wanna put that out there for you guys to think about and really digest. Because it's important that while we're looking at Sanchez now and building the school is, is, is a priority we need to meet, please understand that Sanchez is one school of many also on Guam, and we are all one people of Guam as well. And we're also going to need to meet all of those other priorities and there's only so much money to go around. So we'll build a good Sanchez, but with your help, we'll also make sure there's enough money to build good schools throughout the island. If we go, if, if we get too caught up in the passions of, of building this one school, it could hurt our ability to build good schools throughout the island. So I need you guys to help us balance that. Okay? It's gonna come from you. A lot of this energy is all coming from you. But if, if we get too swept away in it, it could have painful effects for everything else on the island. So we need you guys to be mindful of that and to balance that as well. If you could please help us that way too, I would really appreciate it. But thank you guys for coming down and making the time.
Thank you very much, Senator Siniklis. Senator Spishio?
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Speaker. Uh, good afternoon, Sharks. The, uh, last time, uh, the Simon Sanchez Sharks was, it was in this room was on a discussion on shark finning. And some of you were here. And, uh, some of you were here when, uh, the fishermen, uh, were here as well. And it was a very contentious, uh, kind of, uh, an issue. Uh, but because of, uh, what you've done, uh, for that issue, uh, you really allowed, uh, the legislature to get the kinda support uh, that it needed from the community. And that bill, uh, passed, uh, the legislature and, uh, the governor signed it. And so to your credit and to the credit of the, the Simon Sanchez Sharks, uh, spirit of this inspiring people to do, uh, good and to do right uh, in our community is certainly, um, that's your legacy already. Uh, there was some talk of a competition, uh, here in these, uh, bills that were introduced, but there's really no competing interest. And I don't see, uh, why all these bills shouldn't pass. I certainly see, uh, opportunity for, for these bills to pass along with, uh, Public Law Thirty-One dash two to nine that's on the books already that Senator Gauthier sponsored last term, uh, to give the administration, uh, the wherewithal. Uh, and the, if they had the will to do it, uh, they would have moved forward to, um, to rebuilding Simon Sanchez and addressing system-wide, uh, upgrades, uh, and repair to all the public school facilities. And so I think, uh, Mr. Chairman, if we, uh, move forward on all of these bills, uh, that the speaker, uh, introduced and that I co-sponsored with Senator McCready, and then we leave it to the education stakeholders, particularly, uh, uh, the Board of Education, uh, to determine, uh, what those priorities are. And don't worry, Simon Sanchez, uh, is a priority because if you look at all the, the schools in need of, uh, dire, in dire need of repair, uh, your school's certainly at the top of the list. Uh, but having this holistic approach, uh, that Senator Siniklis talked about uh, is something that should be welcomed as opposed to being seen as, oh, what does that mean? That means my school's gonna be ignored? Your school will not be ignored, uh, certainly not when you have, uh, Project Inspire and not certainly when you've, uh, demonstrated, uh, publicly your ability to get the kind of will that's needed uh, for this government to respond. And so, uh, this was a good, um, afternoon. Uh, this was a great discussion. And again, I, I think, um, we acknowledge that there's no competing interests. And there's no competing interests and there's no, uh, competition here. The only, uh, thing we wanna do is make sure that, uh, you would study and your, your siblings will study in an environment that's conducive to learning. So I, I continue to thank all of you for what you've done, uh, with the shark finning issue and certainly what you're doing, uh, to call attention, uh, to the kind of, uh, attention that's needed for your school and throughout the entire school system. So feel good about what you're doing because help is on the way. And thank you all for your participation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, uh, Senator Spishio. Speaker Wampat?
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry I didn't get the name of the young lady, the one in the white. What's her name? I did.
Mariel.
You're so very soft spoken. Marian?
Mariel.
Mariel. Well, Mariel, I want to, uh, thank you for your testimony. Um, what you said was something I haven't heard in, in a long time. And, and I, and from there on, you started the wave with everybody else who've come after you where what you really want and your goal with the program that your teacher has taught you is to try to keep your school clean. And you saw something and you took it upon yourself to start to do something. And I applaud you for that. And I applaud every one of you who are here. And like the senators have said is that, uh, I hope you don't stop for, uh, from this particular, um, demonstration or outcry that you're doing because I know Simon Sanchez is your environment, but the entire island will be your environment. And when you go to UOG, that will be your environment. If you go off-island, that will be your environment. And so I'm just asking that you continue, uh, to, to be involved, continue to be empowered. And this is a, an excellent opportunity where you're learning to, to voice your opinion. You're appealing to your leaders. By the same token, you need to appeal as well to your leaders at your own school. Because as a former school principal, it was incumbent upon me as a principal to make sure that my school, no matter how old my school is, that it would always be clean and always be taken care of. And the last school I was in was Benevente Middle. To the point when a board member came to my campus, she basically said, you could almost see her reflection on my floors. And that's how clean the school was. So it's the occupants of the school who determines exactly what your school is gonna be like. And your education will only be as good as what you decide how it should be. So I, I wanna thank all of you, um, for being here and to, uh, and for, you know, letting us know what your concerns are. And as everyone said, and Speaker Ben DeLina is right, you, all of you, will be the winners here. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Speaker Wampat. Senator Morrison?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. And, uh, I'm very encouraged for the future of Guam, certainly with the presence of uh, many sh- students here from Simon Sanchez and the, the leadership, uh, that you have shown here today as clearly the leaders of tomorrow. And I, I just want to point out on a bright side, on a bright side that, this has been one of the best, Simon Sanchez has been one of the best investments the government of Guam has ever made. For thirty, or twenty, thirty, forty years, that school has survived many challenges. But at the same time, it has produced quality students like yourselves today. And I, I, I just wanna point out that fact that there is many schools and I wanna thank you for inviting me to walk in the shoes of a shark. Because, well, for one day it was hard to get a perspective, but I tried to find that perspective, understanding that as much as you guys go out there, not only in academics, but even in athletic sports, gosh, you guys are producing so much championships. You're still focused on what you wanna do in your school. But still having the perspective annoying surrounding you, you're seeing brand-new schools being built. JFK, Ukudu, you're seeing the new gym at, uh, Southern High, the auditorium. You're seeing the track and field, GW being fixed. I could understand now and have that perspective of walking in the shoes of a shark. So I wanna thank you for being here and bringing that perspective to us because I, I understand that you will continue what you're doing in school, continuing to focus on your studies. But I understand that I, 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 I could feel you if I was in your, right now, uh, sitting at your school and seeing this whole happening around the island with all the other schools that are getting these upgrades. I will voice my concern too as well. So thank you for being here today and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Thank you. Senator Munia Barnes?
Sis Dusmasi, Mr. Speaker.
We still have the other panel that we're gonna bring back.
Yes, I understand. Uh, a real short, I just wanna thank all of you guys who stepped up to the plate, uh, to wanna make a difference for, for your family members, your siblings, uh, your relatives. But more importantly, as I see the teachers here, as I see President Underwood out there recruiting students for the University of Guam and helping hold that, that, uh, poster banner out up there, I just wanna say, Team Simon Sanchez is truly the number-one championship school because they wanna make a difference for their so-so. So, on Donklin, Sis Dusmasi, Sis Dus on Bene D C, God bless you, and continue the hard work because we are listening, Sis Dusmasi.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, any final comments before I dismiss the panel?
Yes, sir. Uh, I would like to thank Senator Tommy Morrison for announcing those things that have been happening at other schools. But what makes me think is, why only one week of renovation? Uh, I'm not sure if you guys were, uh, um, I'm not sure if you guys were informed, but then there are conditioners at Simon Sanchez High School in the main building that have been out just recently, the ones that they have replaced. I would also like to, uh, add that, I'm not sure if you guys were informed that on that rainy season, uh, the science building was flooded up to the ankle, like ankle area. And even in the main building, water was coming in through the main building. I would just like to mention those things because those are very important. Those are safety, uh, issues.
That's after the repairs, right?
Yeah, after. That was before the rainy, the rainy season was before the repairs. Yeah, but after the repairs, the air cons are down again. And I'd just like to take pride in the championships that we've, uh, accomplished and.
One more, one more? One more coming up? All right. Thank you very much, Sis Dusmasi, ladies and gentlemen. I'm gonna ask then the education officials, Ms. Taitano, Mr. Malay, uh, to, to come forward, uh, for any questions from the panel here. Unless there are other students who wish to testify, then we'll go ahead and hear them as well. Thank you. Uh, Speaker Wampat, did you have any questions for the panel?
I just have a one question. Um, the, the last, uh, young man who, who spoke based in kinda gave a, a report now after some of the work that, uh, was done at the, at, uh, Simon Sanchez, that brand-new air conditioners that were installed had actually, uh, broken down. And, and because this is contracted out, then has, yeah, that's right, there's a warranty. Have they come in to address that then immediately so that, uh, you know, like they say, we're not just throwing money away.
No, you're, thank you, Speaker. You're absolutely right. I was there yesterday. I asked some of the students where this was. They said the second floor. I spent most of my time on the second floor, um, and it was conditioned yesterday. So I'm not sure if it went out today. But I will be there tomorrow as well to, you know, look into that, to make sure that we get word to the vendor. Because you're right, it comes with a warranty.
Now, I, so for the others, of course, uh, my understanding as well, he was, it said that in some areas where the uh, temporary buildings are that there is still some flooding. Now, I understand that prior to all this, that when there was some flooding, it was actually a man-made, uh, problem that was created uh, because they had built apparently a project, uh, that got in the way of the passage, uh, for the water to drain. And that has been addressed. And I'm just hoping that, like the young lady, uh, mentioned is that, you know, I wish more people would be communicating then that when they do some of these things and it could negatively impact on the school then, that at least they've spoken to somebody at maintenance or I don't, I think you have on contracts with EXO, uh, so that then they can, you know, kinda assess the situation to make sure that we don't compound the problem afterwards. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And remember that the hearings are on the bills as they relate to the financing of the, uh, resources necessary so we can kinda focus back on those questioned, line of questioning. Uh, are you done, Speaker Wampat?
So, I, I, Dr. Underwood, you're right. Um, I know that you, you said you had some news in terms of, uh, the USDA. Do you know when would that, uh, be finalized?
Yeah, well, we fully anticipate that it'll be before the end of the month because it's the, uh, uh, you know, obviously there was the two-month delay of government activity. And then, uh, the interest rates went up in the meantime, but, uh, we clarified that with, uh, a personal, uh, site visit and, uh, to the Honorable Leader in Hawaii. And, uh, I'll be going to Washington, D.C. again at the end of the month. So I think we're gonna wrap it up. But, uh, of course, even subsequent to that, they'll be, uh, curious as to, uh, what the legislative activity is like. And, you know, as you know, that's just the first series of, amount of documents that, that end up signing.
Oh, and one, one last one. Um, Dr. Krucen had asked this question in terms of the five-hundred-thousand dollars to be able to do that, uh, uh, assessment or master plan. And because, um, Sodexo had done apparently some work and then the Army Corps of Engineers did, you know, some assessment. Uh, what, uh, uh, do you know how much Sodexo had basically charged to do, uh, you know, the assessment so that then it'll give the committee a better idea in terms of a dollar amount then? Uh, I mean, other than, other than the five-hundred-thousand dollars, because that was based on a formula and what's available, that's the amount. But now with the amendment that we're proposing, uh, that could change. So do you have any idea? Uh, I know you haven't done an RFP, of course, but a, a roundabout figure to kinda give us a sense of, you know, what that would be?
Uh, you know, I don't recall off the top of my head how much, how much the F cap cost. Um, Taneguchi Ruth, I believe, did our last master plan and I can, uh, research, uh, uh, to see how much that cost. But that was done back in, um, nineteen ninety-nine.
Thank you very much. Senator Munia Barnes, do you have any questions? Okay. Senator Morrison? Senator Siniklis? Senator Siniklas?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just real quick, you know, of all the things and, and all the bills, I mean, of course rebuilding Sanchez is definitely a priority that we all share. But one of the things that I, I really, I'm really big on, that, that these future generations kind of reflect on for, for all of us here is, is this master plan, you know, then this is a desperate need. I mean, my boy, like I said, goes to Maria Joa and the school's nice, you know, the administration does a good job of maintaining it, but the reality is where in terror is going to take its toll. And when their kids are six years old, they're going to probably be going to that school and to all the other schools on the island. And so we really need to know what it's going to take for us to be able to maintain and upgrade and rebuild or whatever, but we need to have a direction in terms of, of, of these facilities and exactly what it's going to take for us to be able to meet that future demand that's no doubt going to come. So if we can, as quickly as possible, I really appreciate Dr. Cruz's testimony and Talling yours as well because you guys really kind of focused on that master plan element of it. But if we can get a firmer number on what that's going to cost, aside from coming up with a financing scheme for Sanchez that we need to do, that for me would be priority number one, you know, getting a true roadmap of exactly where all of our facilities are and what it's going to cost for us to be able to keep them at an operational level that's going to not only just be adequate education, but be exceptional education for our kids in terms of, of facilities and, and capital assets. So if we can, if we can get a firm handle on that right away, I'll be very happy to get right behind, you know, all of these bills that support that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Senator Dunning?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I certainly do also echo the sentiments of Dr. Cruz, I think that was a very well-stated position. Talling, I, I just read with curiosity in the testimony, although it starts by acknowledging all the bills and then it reflects on Public Law 31 to 29 and essentially makes a recommendation for Bill 226 to be amended into Bill 225. So it is, is it, I guess, on the record, the position, because I'm reading this in your testimony that, or the testimony provided, that essentially you're looking to 225 as the key piece of legislation to move this effort forward in your, in your reading of the bills. I just think that's important for the committee as we work together to finalize. And so, so I guess Talling then, in your simple reading of the bills, you, the position then would be to consolidate and amend all of those items into Bill 225, is the testimony that you're presenting on behalf of the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Senator Adder.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know Senator Siniklas wrote up the issue of the, the master plan and I'm, I'm just also wondering whether $500,000 is enough for a master facilities plan and what does this entail? Is it just the current schools, the overall schools, I mean, everything? And if $500,000 is enough or isn't enough because we spent millions of dollars on, on contract to SEDEXO to come up with the, what, what are our problems at our schools and we're looking at a $500,000 for a master plan, so is this enough or is this not enough?
Certainly that's something that we can reach out to try to get a better feel for. The work that was done by SEDEXO and the Army Corps was to take a look at our existing facilities and assess the amount of deferred maintenance that was necessary to bring the schools up to coat the, master plan is a, is a planning document that would look at enrollment trends, our current facilities, where we should build new schools. So it's a much broader and holistic approach.
So then should, should the master plan be in place before we start building? So like the military buildup, they ain't going to do, they're not going to turn one ounce of dirt until they actually have the full scope of a, a master plan of where the facilities are going and, and these things before they spend billions of dollars putting it somewhere where it shouldn't be?
Thank you, Senator, that's a, that's a very valid point. And I think one of the reasons that collaboratively we were recommending the master plan be moved from 226 to 225 was so that it could actually be pushed up to the front of the agenda. We did see 225 as more of a vehicle to drive the other pieces of legislation and, and that was the one that was going to be, that was going to be the horse pulling the cart, so to speak. And so you're right, yeah, the master facility plan needs to be on the forefront. If it can happen simultaneously as with the renovation rebuild, whatever Simon Sanchez's future becomes, then that's great too. But that master facility plan is, is absolutely crucial. I too have kids in public school and their facilities built in the 1950s, so I mean, I know the time's going to come where there's going to need to be major renovation and repair of that school as well, and so that master facility plan is crucial.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Speaker Ben. And so, you know, we've been talking about this master plan for a couple of years now and so I'm, I'm glad it is going to move forward. And Speaker Ben and Madam Speaker, we had a delightful table talk this morning with Superintendent Talling Titanow and Erica Cruz and they have a lot of very exciting plans. And I raise it because as we do look at possibly turning GW into a STEM school and possibly turning Southern High into a fine arts magnet, Senator Adder is correct and all of those components need to be put on the table. Because that will impact where our kids want to go to school and the facility and what it's going to look like and the transportation and the equipment and all of that. So I, I also echo the need to really do that. Now, certainly there are some immediate steps, immediate remediation steps that need to be made and, you know, we're reasonable and you're going to take care of that and so that I don't see a problem with. But doing it smartly and strategically is what we need to do. And I also trust that in all of this, two things, one, in all this master plan talk preparation, two things, one is that all the ADA issues will be addressed. For example, Truman is absolutely inaccessible and that shouldn't be, so that's one example of a school, but there are everywhere. We shouldn't put our kids in lifts to get to the second floor and we shouldn't not have to put certain classes on the ground floor just so that those in chairs or those who are blind are segregated in that component. That's, that's the first thing, the ADA. The second thing is something that I've, that's just slipped my mind. But I do look forward to, to moving forward and, and looking at everything that has been talked about with you and, and your Board of Education and how we can best support that and just be really smart about how we move forward in that. And when I think about that second thing, I'll email you and stuff, so thank you, Speaker Ben.
Thank you very much. Ms. Titanow, you mentioned Public Law 31229 and in that bill, or in that statute, it contemplates that any new construction and financing, the payment source of, the repayment source for the additional debt is going to come out of the DOE operational funds. Are you prepared to do that under your current allocation?
Not under the current allocation, sir.
So why are you recommending we go with 229?
I, I believe in the testimony, it was more referencing the bill to see if it actually makes sense and from where we're sitting, we're not quite sure how those pieces are going to fit together in that puzzle and that's why we're coming out supporting the bills that are before us today. We've attempted to try to see how that's going to work, but with the current allocation, that's going to be pretty difficult.
The governor's using Bill 229 to also purchase the TZ facilities. He's using that as the authority given to him to purchase that. And if we purchase the TZ facilities, it'll consume, of course, the available resources that we have at this time and even in future growth, given that any future growth is also already allocated for future growth and debt service. In other words, in two years, our debt service is going to go from eight million dollars a year in one bond to 20 million dollars a year, which is a 17 million dollar buy, or 12 million dollar increase in one fiscal year. And the TZ facility is going to consume 10 million dollars in, for the DOE, for a central high school and the additional DOE headquarters that the governor is, is proposing and so forth. So I, I think those are the challenges we find ourselves with. So when, when DOE says, yeah, we want a central high school, it may end up that it's maybe the central high school at the expense of other resources needed for the other facilities. And that's one of the reasons why we're kind of, as the children mentioned this afternoon, you know, we've sunk what, 2 million, 3 million into Sanchez so far maybe, including IRA funds, maybe a little bit more. And they're saying it's, it's going to show, it's a 30 or 40-year-old building, well, the TZ facility is a 50-year-old building. And so, you know, we're going to see, we're going to see the, the Band-Aids come off or the duct tape even, you know, because it'll last a little longer than Band-Aid, but duct tape will come off, even though we all think it's indestructible. And so that's why it's really important to take a look at the facilities that we have and, and how do we rehabilitate, refurbish or build new ones so that they will, you know, not be challenged then with, with having to live with 50-year-old facilities, no matter what and how much paint and duct tape we put on it. The other thing I, I have a question on is, you mentioned that as part of your facility, development of your facilities master plan, you're going to take a look at attendance districts. And if you take a look at attendance districts at this time, you may not need as much money for construction of new schools if you realign your attendance district. So any new money for, that you may be saying, I want for, for a new school could probably go into, you know, a rehabilitation fund for all the existing other high schools. Would you look at attendance district first before deciding what you want to build and funding those new construction? And then after realigning your attendance districts so that you're able to rebalance, you know, attendance or school populations, then you have the resources needed to make the improvements to the schools. Is that something that the administration may look at in its planning phase for, for this and rather than moving forward with that, start with that and then see what kind of facilities you need once you realign, realign those attendance districts?
Thank you for that point. And reassignment of attendance area is always a, a topic of discussion for the different schooling levels, whether it's elementary, middle or high school. But I think like we heard in the testimony of an earlier bill where a high school student was getting up super early in the morning, if we extend those attendance areas much further away from the destination, then those students are going to have to get up even earlier than early and the bus drivers are going to have to fire up the bus. And so those are definite discussions. I mean, we, we understand that that might make sense, you know, thinking about it on pieces of paper and, but when you make that drive from, say, Route, Route Eight over here in Mighty, Maung Lontto to Mighty all the way down to Santa Rita, one way alone is a significant amount of time. And then when you've got to go home at the end of the day, that's, that's double the time. So I'm not sure if that makes the most sense. I do understand that there's a lot of outcry to reassign attendance areas, I understand that. But is that the best solution? And I'm not sure that that is, but hopefully this master facility plan will help generate those discussions and come to those so, solutions and the conclusions on what does make the most sense.
But I don't think you can deny though that the reason why the early hours was because of the early hours in which, of course, schools are starting. And there's no hard rule basically to say that they must start at 7:00 AM, of course, getting your kids out there at 5:00 because, you know, it can be an extended day for that matter. But it's a combination of things, I think, is what the speaker is talking about as well, not just realignment, a reassignment of areas, but if you look at the bill in 226, that the study here must take all these priorities into account, you know, the curriculum programs, like what you did with STEM, the possibility of what Senator Lee was talking about, even Southern High, population densities, transportation, traffic, busing, all those have to be, you know, a part of this, you know, analysis is going to be done in this, in the master planning. But it's got to be a combination of things, not just, like I said, one thing. Because when you look at the different structure in your reorganization, you could have possibly a K to 8 program. What's to stop us from doing that? It doesn't mean we have to go back to an old junior high school and we did that, we did it because we were overpopulated in our elementary schools and that's why we moved them up, you know. And then now we're saying, well, we're populated in our, our high schools. So what are you going to do, is that the solution to move them back down? Not necessarily. Because you can have different organizations, you know, like I said, you know, the three, four, or three, I mean, five, three, four, or like I say, K to 8 or what have you. Or K-12, yeah, exactly.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Malley. Dr. Underwood, in this financing, you say, I don't want you to feel left out. It's a pretty easy question. In the financing is, for this new loan, is, is that all new loan or is that, does that include some refinancing?
No, we, we had to leave out the refinancing.
So you left the refinancing out? So there's no debt relief?
No, no debt relief.
No additional money we may be able to reallocate?
No, because it, 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 you know, it just proved to be impossible.
Okay, all right. That was easy.
Yeah, sure. And I, I want to thank you for allowing me the time to recruit some students.
Yes, you're welcome. Thank you very much.
And they were very receptive out there.
Well, there's where the increases, that's just where increased tuition so that we can. Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions from the panel? Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. We have now exhausted the items on the agenda and therefore we will now declare this public hearing adjourned. Thank you, Sisudusmasi.